All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, I have some preliminaries, I have some opening remarks, and we'll dive in, and I think we're already behind schedule based on the amount of information I have. So there are some black and white packets at your seats, we printed those recognizing that in the blue background, some of those tables might be hard to read. So same information, just formatted differently, yep. And secondly, um, we have a scheduled break for lunch, and then as I think you know, Sina Airport Authority kind of made a last minute request that we come out to a unveiling of an airplane that One Vision is taking on as a product line. So I've got a city vehicle, I can take about four, and then staff can transport you, you can catch a ride, but we'll try to get everybody out there and get back just as quick as we can for that. The microphones that are in front of you are for the purpose of going out over the video, they're not connected to the sound system. I've got this microphone, presuming that we're going to do a lot of the talking, and so you can hear, if we have other sound issues, let us know, and we may have to kind of regroup as we go along. Um, and I think that's the preliminaries that I had. The, kind of the overarching comments I wanted to provide to you is today, this is kind of a three-part brainstorming session in my mind. Staff has done some brainstorming in advance. Today's certainly a brainstorming session, intended to share that information from staff and give you the opportunity. Um, if you're familiar with brainstorming, just trying to get everything out on the table, um, and in the past, we've done exercise, dot exercises and what have you. My intent is to compile all the feedback that we get and do a survey between now and when we regroup, so then the next step, we can talk about priorities and sort through those brainstorming items. Uh, so that means on the 18th of April, and then that also informs the budget. And I realize not everything's about money, but the bulk of these things involve money in some fashion, one way or the other, and it certainly informs the budget. Some overarching things I wanted to share is, we as staff know that we have capacity challenges internally, what we're currently doing and the breadth of what we are likely to brainstorm certainly exceeds the capacity of staff, so it's going to require some prioritization. Uh, we're seeing the same thing with consulting. I'm guilty of telling staff, well, it's hired out, and we struggle even if we have a designer or consultant selected getting their attention and their capacity, same way with contractors, and then we're seeing premium pricing, and I think we might just need to collectively get our heads around, uh, things may cost more, and it's just part of our prioritization decision. The other thing I would say is, we've been broke as long as we can remember. I've been in this profession 32 years now, and I've been perpetually broke across four different communities, and that, you know, that's not out of the ordinary, that kind of impacts where we find ourselves, but I, we do have some financial opportunities that are unique, um, and I think that's probably going to be a lot of the conversation, or could inform a lot of the conversation. I think we've got some annual budget capacity that we haven't had in years past, and then we also have financial reserves in excess of our targets that create some capacity too. Um, I'm going to take the opportunity to share with you kind of my priorities, um, and certainly you ultimately set the priorities, but to me, priority one is wages, um, and none of this is in the presentation yet. Um, to me, number one is wages, there's just the obvious, um, trying to treat our employees right, but we've lived through the recruitment and retention challenges that, that, um, our structural imbalance, our financial imbalance put us in. The pay plan's helped, uh, we're in a, in a crazy employment market that's probably not going to change anytime soon, just had a conversation with, with another executive yesterday morning saying that, they were at a seminar saying, you just need to plan for 25, and doing things with 25% less available staff than you've had in the past, um, we're kind of seeing that in the market. Um, the other thing that's priority that I would offer up is what I call budget stability. Um, I think we have an opportunity to do some long-term financial planning, um, and I sincerely believe we have an opportunity to create a perpetual legacy for the community. If we get, if we take this opportunity and get our finances stabilized, um, we won't have, we can avoid the challenges that we're trying to resolve that from the past. Um, to me, that means sustainability, the operations that we take on, it means replacement schedules, um, and, and financial planning across the organization, it's addressing prior, deferred maintenance and replacement historically and prioritizing so that we can minimize that in the future. Um, on the reserve side, and we have quite a bit, and my goal is prudent use of those reserves, um, so we're informed about operational priority, those, those decisions are informed by our operational priorities, our replacement schedules, our maintenance challenges, um, and there are certainly opportunities that we're going to have to decide what's a priority. Um, I'd like to see us be very deliberate as we take on new projects and new programs, and as we think about, you know, giving funds to outside agencies, not to say that we can't do any of those, but it all kind of interrelates, we've got an opportunity here. And then the last thing I would say is, um, it may sound odd, but staff's had conversations for a while now that it's difficult for us to spend, uh, money in, in some of the levels that we're talking about. The first thing that happens is we have sticker shock and cost avoidance collectively, and not just staff, but I think the governing body. Um, there's a predisposition to try to do things in-house, which is commendable, but with the capacity that we have, and then we're trying to add sizable projects, bringing it in-house, uh, equals delays. Um, then we have the budget process, um, as opportunities present themselves, we typically would say, well, we'll, we'll get that the next budget year, um, that's something that we may want to think about differently, and you get, you have to go through the design process, the bid process, the contract administration process. I say all that just because we are actively talking about how do we expedite, um, priorities, and that may be a different approach to budget amendments, that may be a different approach to, uh, bringing on designers proactively and, and how we bid things out. So with that, I've asked Debbie to be prepared to provide a financial overview to kind of set the baseline. I know we've had some of these conversations kind of individually and, and over time, but just wanted to give you a quick recap.
So it's first one, and I don't, I didn't include all the funds, but some of the funds are not spendable, and a lot of those are like asset funds, things like that, so I was trying to give you those, those funds that, and then I'll note to you, these funds are really specific to a specific cause, uh, and we really don't have the, the capacity to spend that money just for anything. So I did see on this table, the general fund ended, and these are all preliminary numbers because we have not been through our audit yet, the general fund ended at the end of the year with about $23.8 million, has a target fund balance of $10 million, and we'll go through the detail of this and kind of how we got here and what caused some of these things throughout this presentation. Arch Humanities has about $103,000 with a target of $100,000. The Sales Tax Capital Fund ended 2022 with about $7.5 million with a target fund balance of $750. Sales Tax Economic Development was around $900,000 with the target of $750. Special Parks Fund, which is the alcohol section of the Special Parks Fund, um, was, came in at $432,000 with a target of $50,000. Special Gas, which is streets and those transportation type things from special gas tax, um, ended 2022 with about $1.9 million, and we have that targeted at $250,000. Neighborhood Parks, $46,000, TPEC, $203,000. Schilling Air Force Environmental still has $61 million available for their project. Sanitation came in at $1.6 million with a target of $500,000. Solid Waste came in at $6.9 million with a target of $500,000. Golf came in at about $67,000 with a target of $100,000. Water and wastewater came in about $23.6 million with a target of $5 million. Workers' Comp came in at a little over $900,000 with a target of $750. And if you'll remember, the, the Workers' Comp and Health Insurance Fund, we set some, uh, policy as far as what those balances should be and how we calculate those, um, we are kind of working on that as we get through a full period to figure out what that fund balance should be. You'll be hearing probably more about that at some city commission meetings coming forward. Uh, Health Insurance was, ended about $3.8 million with a target of $2 million. Central Garage, $278,000 with a target of $100,000, and the Bond and Interest Fund at $1.4 million with a target of $800,000. Those are our operating accounts where we take most of our funding out, and those are our budgeted, budgeted accounts that we budget each year, and, um, kind of have to make, as Mike was mentioning, amendments if we decide to make, uh, different purchases or something like that. And then on the right-hand side of this, this table, I pulled in all the reserve accounts. And as you recall, back in 2021, um, any of the allocations, we had this long discussion about, we were setting aside the sales tax for specific funding, and they weren't spending it all, so it was going back into sales tax, and so they were never kind of catching up, and it was never going to what we intended it to. So back in 2021, we created some independent funds for maintenance and capital reserve for the purposes that sales tax had indicated. So we, we created the Parks Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund, which was indicated for just what it says, maintenance of our park systems and then any purchases related to that. Um, that fund at the end of 2022 had a balance of $1.4 million. Building some Facilities Capital Reserve was another one that we, we allocated funds from sales tax, that came in at about $580,000 at the end of 2022. Fleet Management, which is our Enterprise Fleet, uh, Lease Program, uh, came in about $735,000 at the end of 2022. Vehicles and Equipment Replacement Capital Reserve came in at $500,000, and then Street Maintenance was the last one that we set up, that, that was an allocation from sales tax, and it came in about $577,000 at the end of 2022. On top of those, we have some other capital reserve funds for some of the enterprise funds that were established a long time ago, but we continue to use those for, more for capital, um, improvements as we see those coming, or for regulatory requirements that we have, uh, going forward. The Water Capital Reserve, um, ended the fund balance at 2022 about $10.5 million. Post-Closure, which is the Solid Waste Landfill, uh, Post-Closure Reserve Fund is, is running about $900,000. The Solid Waste Capital Reserve is $1.7 million, and the Kenwood Cove Maintenance Reserve is at, uh, was at $68,000 at the end of 2022. So that's just an overview of all the, a lot of the funds that we go, got, uh, we have that we, we look at, and we look at, um, historically in the budgets. So that, the next few slides, we're going to look really at the General Fund, as you recall, the General Fund of, the Basic Operating Fund of the city, that for all of the cost of police, fire, parks, um, development services, any of those kind of operational, um, specific items of the city comes out of. Uh, this is by far our largest fund, and so there's a lot of information here that, that we have. So what I wanted to provide here, and, and the point we were trying to show you is that until about 2021, we, our fund balance was not growing. We, we didn't have these spikes and ebbs and flows in, in history of, of expenses and revenue. Um, so as you can see, uh, the, the growth in this, and I tried to break this out by year by every, uh, type of revenue, but overall, um, we grew sometimes 2%, sometimes dropped and, and kind of ebbed and flow. Um, what you'll see in, in these big years like 2021 was obviously the COVID, we had reduced personnel costs, so you can see that our costs in 2022, or 2020 dropped by 9%. That was an intentional, um, we had CARES Act funding also in that same year, so our revenues went up. And, and then in 2021, as a result, we don't know if as a result of COVID, but we saw our sales tax explode in 2020 and 2021, and again in 2022. So that, that's a big reason why our, we're seeing our revenues go up in those two particular years. Um, and also we had, we saw in 2022 an increase in franchise fees, which is typically related to weather and things like that, so that's a, that's one that's hard really to, um, predict what it's going to do. Um, and then we also saw some increases in fees and charges. But, but as you can see, the history of the, the, the fund has been pretty insignificant. You can see at the very bottom, on the second to the bottom line, we, we typically came in either in a negative and a loss situation, or not a very big, uh, net income situation until about 2019. Um, and then if we go to the next page, these, these next three slides are really pictures of what was happening. So in this particular slide on the left, it just shows you how the net, if you look at the red and the green up until about 2019, you can see that the, our revenue and our expenses were pretty much the same. We didn't have any capacity in revenue, and, um, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of what changed that, um, 2017, we had a little spike, and that, that came from the TPEC naming rights that we received for this particular facility. Um, the city was, uh, given $1.2 million, that helped in that spike in, in revenue over expenses in 2017. Um, like I mentioned, in 2019, there was increases from sales tax. We also in 2019 recognized that our historical, um, net income to loss was pretty low, and we had some significant concerns in the, probably about the middle of 2019. So in 2019, we implemented some cost-cutting initiatives in the second, third, fourth quarter of 2019, um, that really spurred like this growth that we're seeing. So we, we did some cost-cutting and tried to make, make sure that we were going to come into a positive flow, because what we're seeing it was, as we went through like bonding and things like that, one of the biggest, one of the big issues that they were bringing up was our fund balance. We only had a fund balance of like $5 million to a $45 million budget, and so we were trying to, as, as Mike alluded to, we were trying to start getting to a point where we were putting money in that bank and trying to prove that we were, we're making efforts to make sure that we were, we were getting, uh, our, kind of our ducks in a row and our, our financial stability back in line. And then of course, COVID hit in 2020, um, and as I mentioned earlier, you can see the difference in the revenue and the expenses between graphically in 2020 through 21 and 22. Um, the slide on the right is just a reminder, um, we talk about this quite often, that where does our revenue come from? Um, our sales tax is by far the, the largest contributor to our revenue in the general fund. It's about 35% of what we, we collect is, uh, sales tax. Property tax is about 22%, and then franchise fees, um, from external parties is about 13%. Um, and then you can see the others are significantly lower to those numbers, um, but you can see that property tax, sales tax have a huge effect on what happens in the general fund. And so as we, we're seeing these numbers go up, um, it's pretty obvious why we're, we're gathering a larger and larger fund balance as we go along. On the next slide, um, really what I was trying to show here is that this is the annual growth of revenue, and you can see it goes up and down and up and down and up and down, which is the predictability of finance, um, in our world is, it's unknown. Uh, but you can see the average is only about 1.3%. Um, as we get more and more of these larger growths, um, in these later years, that number obviously is going to go up, but over a 10-year period, that number's only about 1.3%. And if you think about what inflation's done, um, and, and what the Consumer Price Index has done, it's typically somewhere in the 2% range. Um, so it's, it's pretty obviously that prior to the last few years, we have not been keeping up with inflation. Um, and that's, that's been our concern probably for the last three or four years, is how do we maintain that and how we get that to be more stable? Um, the next slide, I, I wanted to provide kind of those upper, uh, echelons of revenue, what those numbers have done historically, because I think this shows you where that growth has been. So I've provided sales tax, property tax, franchise fees, and then EMS is our next largest, um, internal, uh, revenue source to try to show you what the growth in those particular items have been. Um, 2018, you can see there's, there was a significant growth in sales tax, but as you also recall, in 2017, um, is when our sales tax changed. Um, so that, that kind of is an outlier, but once you get past that, you can see 2020, even though COVID was in, we had COVID in 2020, our sales tax still went up 2.5%. And on, on the largest percentage of our revenue of two, of 2.5% growth is significant. Um, in 2021, you can see that number was 11.25%. Um, again, in 2022, it's at 9%. So, um, the average over that 10-year period is about 3.28% growth in sales tax. So as we go forward, and when we try to budget, and we try to project, and we, we have to look at these numbers, but we also have to try to figure out, okay, what happened, what's going to happen, so it's very hard to predict, as we all know. Um, but we also need to, to recognize that there, that it has been growing over the past 10 years, so that's, that's important to look at. Uh, property tax, as we know, is, is a directly related to assessed valuation, and with all the legislation and how they're trying to cap property tax, we had a cap for several years, and now we have the revenue neutral rate, um, that number because of, of assessed valuations and your policy decisions, we've been able to increase that revenue source for ourselves, an average of 2.73% over the, over the life of this 10-year period, uh, which is a number that is more conducive to the CPI or inflation. So that's kind of indicative of kind of what those, where those decisions were going when we made them, I believe. Franchise fees, um, the average over the last 10 years is about 3.5%. Like I said, the percentages on those have not changed in that time period, a lot of that is usage, and as we add on different, uh, companies, and even, even as we add different commercial customers and things like that, those numbers will change because the usage is going to go up. Um, so we can, we can take a look at that. 2022, they had a 15.9% increase over the prior year. Uh, the other one is EMS, uh, we've had a lot of conversations with our fire department, and we'll talk about their, their needs and stuff later, but, um, what we've heard from them is calls are going up. You know, they've significantly increased the number of calls they've had over the last 10 years, um, and so we would expect that that rate to be going up. Um, and so you can see their average is about 2.8% growth. And then the graphic is just a graphic, it kind of shows you those numbers, um, over the last 10 years to see kind of where they're going, um, in it, just in a graphic form. It's a little easier.
Just a point, when you're talking about, you know, the legislature and the things that they're doing right now, um, you know, right now, we're kind of afraid that they are looking at local sales tax on food, whether that might be reduced out. If you look at this chart, if they were to take our local sales tax on food, that takes us back to 2012 levels of, of sales tax revenue. So all the growth that we've seen in the last four or five years would be just immediately wiped out, so that, that's a, that's a pretty big deal. You know, just feeling graphically, it's a, I mean, it's, it's big.
And we've been trying to assess, is this sustainable, this new pattern? And yeah, two years of, of health act growth, it feels like it, I think in the China COVID, we're going to have the dark ones flying around, they've been capital.
Again, you've got to look at, percentages of that could be due to inflation, you know, because you're collecting sales tax on inflated prices, but I, I honestly want to believe a lot of this is, you know, we've done tax abatements and different things over years to bring individuals into our community, and we've always said, we hope the offset of that is you have more individuals in your community and your sales tax goes up. So I'm hoping, I, you know, it's hard to, to know until you see a pattern, but I'd like to believe that some of that's paying off, so.
And to that point, we certainly have the capacity to make some of those decisions and budget to those numbers, and, and we, we have a cushion if, if things would fall back a little bit or something like that, we, we certainly have that cushion to be able to take advantage of that, of those numbers now, and be able to budget a little bit more, um, aggressively, I would say. Um, so the next one, um, is Sales Tax Capital Fund. Um, as, as you know, we utilize this fund for a lot of, uh, reasons, uh, and we'll talk about some of the, the sales tax that we, we do, what we do use this fund for, but, um, again, this is a similar graphic, just to show the growth, annual growth and the, and the fund balance growth, um, over the past 10 years. And you can see as well, in the last three years, 2021, 21, or 20, 20, 21, and 22, this fund's grown exponentially, um, with sales tax. Um, this number does not include the economic development, uh, fund sales tax, which is pretty minimal compared to this, it's about $400,000 a year that goes over to that, but you can see that we're, we're trying to, um, kind of look at this number and also be able to utilize some of these funds in a more aggressive way through, through the budget So how do we use sales tax? Um, the next slide, we put this in there just as a reminder, when we put the ballot out in 2016, um, to increase our sales tax, one of, we wanted to tell people kind of how we were going to spend that, and as you can tell, this, uh, improving neighborhood streets and drainage, we put three points, anywhere from $3.2 to $3.7 million of the sales tax funding goes to street improvements. Uh, preserving a stable property tax base, we allocate about $1 million a year, anywhere from $500 to $1 million a year, um, to kind of offset property tax revenue in the general fund. Quality park system, that's the parks maintenance funding that we've, have allocated. Our historical allocation has been about $500,000 a year. Uh, maintaining capital improvements, which is our equipment, uh, funding equipment is the next one, so our equipment, our buildings and things like that. Um, we typically, together, those are a little over a million dollars that we allocate towards those needed things. Funding debt, um, for capital improvements, we have some funding that we put aside for prior capital improvements, um, and continuing to support, um, to attract quality jobs, and that's that whole economic development portion, um, of the sales tax that's going to the Economic Development Fund. So we try to look at this, what we said, and then we kind of look at what, what we're trying to do to make sure that we're actually doing what we've said we're going to do. Um, so out of that sales tax, uh, revenue that we get every year, the next slide shows you what, how we've been allocating, and this is the allocations from 2023. These numbers did go up a little bit because we recognized in 2022, when we were doing the 2023, that we did have some capacity, and we knew there was some need, so we, we did try to increase these allocations. Um, Economic Development, like I said, gets about $400,000 a year, it's a 3.9% of the collection is what goes to Economic Development. Debt for prior, prior projects is $650,000. The downtown, downtown streetscape debt is about $700,000. And then as you recall, our commitment to the River Renewal is $1.3 million a year. Um, currently, that's going for debt, some current debt that we have for the project, about $427,000, and then a transfer of about $873,000 to that project. Um, and that was another decision we made in 2022, don't leave the money in there, let's set it aside for that project so that we can, it's very transparent where that money is going to for that, for that particular project. Parks Maintenance is about, is $500,000. Uh, Vehicles and Equipment is $900,000, roughly $900,000. Uh, like I said, this was last year's allocation, that historically would have only been $630,000. Uh, $300,000 is going to Fleet Management or the Enterprise Funds, and those are, and the reason we did that was because before the Enterprise, uh, contract, we were buying those vehicles out of this funding, so we were spending more than that a year to buy police cars and buy trucks and buy these, you know, our street, street vehicles, um, and so now we've just allocated that to the lease of those, those vehicles. And so it's opened up some of that funding for other equipment that we weren't able to get because we were having to buy those vehicles. Um, so it's allowed us to get more equipment, mowers and, and street equipment and things like that. Um, Buildings and Facilities, we allocated $476,000 in 2020, that number was about $200,000 prior to that. Um, Kenwood Cove Maintenance, we allocated $150,000, that number was like $68,000 prior to 2023. Capital Planning, we leave that aside for like planning projects and things like that, that if, if we come up with something that we want to have, like a consulting firm or, or a, uh, some sort of study done, we have those kind of funds set aside to do that. We've done several in the past five years that, that we've utilized that. Uh, we have a commitment to hike and bike trails of $50,000 a year. Tax stabilization, we allocated $1 million. Streets, we allocated $3.7 million, and again, the River Renewal Project. In total, that's, in 2023, that's $9.7 million, and if you, um, look at the next slide, our revenue in 2022 was 10, almost 10.5 million dollars. So you can see if, if we continue this progress of, of sales tax selection, we do have some capacity there, um, to kind of make sure we're, we're utilizing those funds as well as we can. So, talk about sales tax, you, I don't know if you look at the monthly with sales tax reports that get out on the city website, but this just kind of gives you an indication of, of where those numbers are compared, this is a five-year comparison, month by month, so you can see that, that the numbers have grown in the last two years significantly, almost every month. Um, and I also wanted to add into 2023, just so you can see kind of where they're going, we had some growth in January, um, it was about, pretty flat in February, I will say in March, um, we have, the March numbers aren't up here, but our March numbers are, were up about 5% from this time, from March last year. um, from this time la- from March last year. But we're not seeing the extreme growth that we had last year at this time. Um, but we are still seeing some growth. Um, and that's just kind of what I wanted to show in this, in this slide is, as, as you can see in the, in the slide in February for last year, that blue next to that purple on the left is the huge increase and then flat for this year. So we're seeing the growth still happened, but it's not at the double-digit range that we were seeing last year. So we're, we're still keeping an eye on those numbers to make sure kind of where they're shaking out.
How do you explain the big growth from January to February this year?
Um, you know, January to February is when it was collected. So we collect sales tax two months after the retailer. So February would be your December sales, Christmas time. So typically, that's a cyclical, cyclical, um, yeah.
I'm thinking January would have been slow sales.
Right, yeah, no, it's two months prior. So that's why you can see, so probably November, there was more sales in November this year as opposed to last year and then.
Probably see a dip in April.
Yes, yeah, you would expect that that number to go back down in April because that's February sales.
Taxes hard though, because there are just individual circumstances that can, that can skew things. So like uh, you, if you have a retailer that hasn't paid their taxes for three quarters and then they make that payment in that quarter, it comes in, even though it was taxed for three quarters ago, it may all show up at one time. So if you have something big like that or a big sale that happens, um, it can get recorded and skew things a little bit. So it's, it's hard to say whether you'll see a dip because of that or not, or if there's an anomaly in there. So it's.
But there are happen, things that typically happen throughout the year that kind of cause, you know, things to happen like.
Typically see the same patterns.
Season sales, yeah. Um, cars have a huge effect on sales tax. So if, if car dealerships are having trouble getting cars and then all of a sudden they have a plethora of sales or they're getting those cars, those could affect that. Typically, it's seasonal sales after April fifteenth because people get tax refunds. And then in the summer, those numbers will go back up a little bit, but, but that's, you know, you can see the, kind of the cyclicalness of sales taxes. So what do we do with all this revenue? Um, as we know, we've talked about this and, and vehicles and equipment replacement is one of the um, items that, that I showed on the sales tax referendum that, that we, we needed to address. And we all know that in the past, we haven't been able to address those needs. Um, and, and really what I wanted to show on this particular slide was while we're budgeting a certain amount and we're approving a certain amount, it seems like a lot. For example, in, in twenty twen- in twenty nineteen even, we approved over a million dollars in replacement, but we had requests of over $2 million. And that, that means those departments have a need that we're not going to, able to fill. And you can see that this is very, um, it's obvious. We're not, we're not, we haven't been able to meet the needs of what our equipment replacement is.
The approved number, that's what we were able to purchase?
Yes, yes, that's what we were able to purchase um, with the amount of money that we had available budgeted for that particular year. So.
Well, quick, quick, is there a rough estimate of how much of these annual ones are for the same? We have a lot of things that are just never approved, you know, they've been on this list for four or five years. So this includes what's needed plus wish list stuff? Or do you, do you pair up? Okay.
Yeah, I, I would say those requests aren't for new equipment generally. I mean, it's replacement of equipment. So it's not, it's not a, I wouldn't say that there's a wish list that goes in here. It's, this is what their needs are. We fund what we can and certainly there are some that will, you know, we couldn't buy the loader this year, so we push it to the next year and the next year, the next year. That certainly happens, but this is not like additions to the fleet. It's, it's generally replacements of what we currently have.
Probably a good one.
This is the best.
You need to buy 10 more of those, right?
And I would add, the process is not haphazard. I mean, the departments have to submit a request with justification, how old it is, how many miles, how many, I mean, there is a lot of process that goes into that approved number. And so when, when it gets to the budget time and Mike has to make a recommendation, he's having to, to vet, okay, does this lawnmower need to be replaced or this police car? And, and so that information is all given, is all provided. Um, so it's, and like Mike said, and Jacob, we, there's very, very rarely in the five years that I've been here has a new piece of equipment been approved, unless it's something that's very safety or something like that.
I know we're going to discuss it, but what you just said was probably where I was trying to get, but you said it very well. Is there a figure that gets us to that place? Let's just say it's two and a half million. Spend it now and now we can budget for the next 40 years, we know what's.
With, with the, what we're doing with the enterprise on the, on those vehicles, that should help. Now, and again, I, not being familiar with, with mowers or other things, are there other opportunities to lease instead of purchase that will help us to smooth that out?
Yeah, no, I think that's exactly right. Uh, and so the enterprise, it is working the way that they explain it would work. Our resale on vehicles is, is much higher than what they anticipated early on. Um, we are just getting to the point where we're starting to turn over some of our first year vehicles and we're seeing, so like you see some of those expeditions, a few of those cost us, you know, $93 to drive that for a year and we sold it. I mean, so it's a, that is, that's really working. We haven't sold a lot of the trucks yet and we expect to, we'll actually get paid for some of those. Um, but we, we haven't been to that point yet. It's been very successful with the exception of police vehicles. Um, they just, we are not able to get them, we've got them ordered, they're just not producing them right now. And it's not just a problem with enterprise, it's a problem with everybody across the board, so. Um, yeah. And we have explored, you know, that kind of a program with uh, with mowers and just not, not found anything that really would, would pay for itself at the end or even, or even helps us. I mean, it really doesn't build us any capacity. So uh, we'd certainly be open if there was something like that, we just haven't, haven't put our finger on it just yet, so.
Well, I have an idea on the mowers. Buy direct from the factory over here. Uh, back to the police cars. It had nothing requested or approved in twenty-two and looks like one car for this year.
Well, and the vehicles for the, they're not in those numbers because now they're in the, the enterprise. So any of the vehicles or the police department after a certain year were then switched over to lease. So this equipment would be some other.
And generally with police vehicles, we, we try to get six or seven every year. And, and that is one point, we have funded police vehicles. We are not, generally, we run a police interceptor for three, maybe four years and we get a new one. I mean, they're just, they, at that point, they have 160,000 miles, things are rattling, it's time to get, get a new vehicle. And we have, we have funded that at a higher level than we have the mowers and some of the other stuff.
KHP trades theirs at 50,000 miles.
So this next slide kind of got in here. Oh, special gas tax and, and the only thing I would say, because it's in here, when we fund street, streets are, our street maintenance is funded from sales tax and from special gas tax. So there's two sources kind of going into that, that street repair. And you see this every time they bring a contract forward. Um, this fund, we're trying, we've done, I think, a better job of spending out this money. Um, it still does have a, a fund balance of about $2 million, but I think we'll see in twenty twenty-three. We've been a, a really aggressive in trying to get that number down and do a little bit more with that money. Um, but that's kind of where that, that kind of fits into the whole sales tax picture is, is as we look at how much we're spending on streets and, and that type of thing. This is the other kind of major uh, funding source for street, street funding, um, maintenance type things.
Up our game in that regard and, and coaching departments to pulling that information together. And the, everyone's been responding very well. You've seen Public Works and their landfill plan, some of that planning previously. So if we can go to the, the next one, Jacob, um, just had this conversation with the fire department a couple of days ago. They're pulling their plan together. As a quick summary, you can see in the left-hand column, that's what we call our frontline equipment that we, is deployed with the fire department. One thing that I would note is we backed down because of budget challenges previously. Uh, Quint, which Quint means it has five different functions it can perform, including an aerial platform. We backed it down to a, an engine for financial reasons. And then we have reserve apparatuses. So we'll take a piece of equipment and when it reaches a certain age theoretically, we'll put it in reserve status. And we have engines that go down that we have to rely on the, the reserve equipment. So the next slide, there's the ages of those pieces of equipment. On the reserve side, we've got pumpers, 34, 21 years old, rescue truck, 34 years old, a quint, 24 years old. Uh, and then we've got some equipment in our frontline fleet that's in, in the twenties and high teens. Um, we've kind of been catch as catch can, trying to replace that equipment without um, a budget amount and, and a plan. Uh, or frankly, the financial ability to, to do it. So what the fire department has done is they've gone in and said, all right, uh, next slide, please. Um, there's various scenarios there, but taking all those pieces of equipment, their expected lifespan and a repla- and, and different replacement schedules. And when you see, if you look at that center one, that assumes we're gonna, at 10 years, take it from the frontline status to the reserve status and we're going to hold it for another 10 years. So you take all the values of all that equipment and say, all right, on that schedule, how much do we need on an annual basis to fund that? It's essentially starts at 1.1 and, and rises to 1.3 million over that 10-year life cycle. If we could say, if we could carve out that amount of money, we then can start to have a cycle for the fire department that we, we're not fighting um, the life expectancy of that equipment. We're trying to do that, that logic, that mentality across the entire organization. So and, and I think that gets to the question you were asking earlier, Trent, that if we, do we know how much we need? That's our, our initial estimate of what it would take to get the fire department set. And if we can di- build that into the budget capacity rather than out of the reserve and we can keep up with inflation, we've fixed this for the community in perpetuity. Um, unless things go haywire. If we funded out of reserve, we solved it at the moment, but we, we have, we have a tsunami coming somewhere down the line. So next slide, I think, is Parks Department.
Right, yeah, right.
So is that a decision we're going to look to make today?
That's an idea I'm putting on the table for us to think about between today and the next meeting.
Twenty twenty-four, we're gonna say, okay, let's take this scenario and let's.
Yeah.
Start running that.
It, it starts as a policy direction, it starts as a budget direction. I see this as brainstorming and there's going to be a whole lot of other things in the conversation. Between, you can have an opportunity to think about it between now and their meeting on the 18th and then you give us some direction. You could say, we have higher priorities, we, we have, you know, pick whatever you want, but we're throwing that out there as a proposed approach for your consideration.
Yeah, I think it's a good approach that we can think about because it, it keeps our equipment more current and it, it levels out our budgeting process. And then when we have special things come about, we know what we have, so.
Yep, that, that kind of gets to some of my opening remarks and we're doing it across the organization. And we, it, they're working hard and literally this week, uh, this came together and the next slide information came together.
Because I'm guessing, you know, we always say personnel's are, is our biggest budgeting issue. And then I'm guessing the equipment is second.
And yep, and then I'd say facilities is right behind that. And Monday, Schneider Electric's going to talk to us about uh, kind of their facilities assessment and some of the price tags that go with that.
So I think it's worth mentioning that the fire apparatus is not out of that sales tax budget, that million dollars. This is generally, we funded it, um, we sold bonds to, to pay for fire trucks and we've not, not done very many. I mean, you can see how, how spread out they are um, as far as the, the life of those vehicles. But it's, it's, it's not come out of a general allocation annually, it's, it's, it's been a debt financed.
And there's, there's two philosophies about debt financing. Obviously, if you don't have the money, um, but you gotta, you gotta make the debt payment no matter what. There's also just the, the, how it being regimented about it. You lease finance those trucks, you've made that commitment, you have that, that obligation long-term. You, you do it on a annual cash basis, uh, somewhere down the line, something else can take priority. So with the interest rates the way they are and our cash reserves, I'm not saying that we should lead with debt. Um, and some of the conversations we're having with, as we put these schedules together, more so in other departments is, can you smooth this out? Can we get the life cycles to where we aren't debt financing? We just know we, if we have this much money each year, it, it addresses your fleet. And Parks is a good example of that.
And it's just kind of like an individual escrow for taxes. You know, each month, you're putting so much into an account versus come, come December, I've got to write that large check. Well, I've had other expenses, now I, now I have a shortfall.
Right, yep, exactly.
I like that philosophy mainly when.
And, and we, we haven't had this opportunity until now. Um, it's, it's really been, as I called it before, whack-a-mole or catch as catch can. So I'm not going to walk you through all these spreadsheets, but I wanted to give you a sense of the Parks Department has inventoried their entire fleet. They talked about what doesn't need to be in the fleet any longer, dialed it down to cat, these categories and then, and said, okay, how, what's the lifecycle? How old is it? How much does it cost? When's it need to be replaced? And so you've got a category of UTVs, you've got a category of mowers, and it's a surprising amount of equipment. And part of the conversation we're having is the confirming the need for it all. Um, you got tractors and large equipment, you have other equipment. And the, the other equipment can, well, maybe I should have at least touched on, there is a column for age in there as well. And 53, I think, is the highest, but we've got them in the forties, in the thirties, in the twenties and, and that, we maintain them, we have central garage or repair shop that maintains them. On the fire department side, we're fabricating equipment we can't get our hands on anymore to keep things running. On the fire department side, we're fabricating equipment we can't get our hands on anymore to keep things running, uh, because of its age. So on the one hand, it's commendable that we keep it, but it, the reliability goes down and maintenance cost goes up. So if you get to the grand total column of the Park slide, and you can see there that, um, and I, I cut out some of the year columns, but you can kind of see they've got it dialed in, smoothed out to four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars a year. That, that was never even in the conversation in prior budgets, you know, back to that. How much do we have to spend and what do we have for capital equipment requests? That, that was just way too big for what we thought the budget was. So we just didn't, we didn't put this plan together and we didn't ask. Um, but that's an example. We need to do the same thing, uh, and Public Works has, has done it as well. We just haven't put the table in. But, um, we need to do that, in my opinion, across the organization. Then you have other capital items, whether it's buildings and other things, which is what Sean's been working on. We have a thorough inventory of all things that could be considered capital, trying to get to this level of planning.
One, is the four hundred, five thousand, what if we budget it now would eventually get us smoothed out?
Mm-hmm. I think so.
Without, there's no extra, after you pay a million or two million, then it's four hundred thousand.
Well, there was a little bit of a spike on the, on the parks that we got to sort out. I, I think their first year, um, had an assumption that was in the seven hundred thousand range. Um, so those are, you know, if, if we, if, if we're moving forward on this approach, then staff can start to say, is there, is there a reserve expenditure that could, uh, be a one-time expenditure to get these plans rolling? Um, and then the last slide is a quick tabulation that Debbie did coming out of that capital improvement planning software. Um, just trying to give you a sense of, uh, across the board, what those numbers look like. And it, we haven't got it all smoothed out, but you can see, um, you know, nine hundred thousand, two point six, two point two, seven, one point four, a million. And that doesn't include fire apparatus. It doesn't include some of those expenditures. But you can start to get a sense of what ballpark we're in if we were trying to address, um, the capital items that we're, we're identifying. I'll pause there. I mean, that's a lot to take in. Yeah, I, I guess the one other thing that I would say is some of those, uh, fund balances relative to target balances are noticeably high. And we need to go back and, and spend some time on target balances. So landfill sanitation, water and wastewater. We know there's things that we're planning for that we haven't necessarily adjusted the target to reflect. And we need to give you that level of detail, um, to, to support that. But we'll stop talking.
This would sure make budget discussions a lot easier for the next thirty years.
If we could, if we could implement it and maintain it, like I said, I think it, it's, it's nuts and bolts. It's, it's not exciting stuff, but it, it builds a base for the community that I, I sincerely think it's, it's a legacy.
So talking about, this is the stuff that nobody gets eager about paying for, but boy, when you have a problem and you need that one piece of equipment, people will be real quick, quick to complain and gripe that you weren't able to.
Yeah.
To fix things.
And, you know, rest, park restrooms, we've kind of taken the same approach. And if we don't, it's that, man, it just doesn't show well. This is embarrassing. What are we gonna do about it? And we can, and we can deal with it as a standalone crisis, or we can try to deal with it as a plan.
Because of our, our fiscal situation, the constraints we had. So the goal with this, much like Mike has alluded to, is to avoid those peaks and valleys. But to get to that point, you first of all, have to know what you have. So you gotta get that comprehensive inventory of everything you have. What is the cost? Then you have to come up with a schedule to replace it. Figure out if you have that first bump upfront that you have to expend in order to get caught up, quote unquote. And then what you can do is you can regulate this on an automatic cycle. So like Mike said, we're not having to go through this exact same thing in the future, as long as our finances. Now, this is all subject to those sales tax numbers. We see a big drop in that, you know, we're, we're getting, you know, Debbie alluded to the advantages of, uh, sales tax numbers on cars. So, you know, as you know, the automotive, uh, they've been selling a lot of them, but that may be changing a, and otherwise. So this is highly dependent on having those same numbers. But then, once you regulate this, then you as an elected body are able to focus on other priorities for those one-off expenditures, things that you want to focus on, rather than trying to have to rob Peter to pay Paul. And that's the goal in the long term is to much more regulate it.
And I had one, one other thing, that's if we can maintain our commitment, using the, the home budget analogy, we don't want to skip the rent payment to go to a concert. If we, you know, put ourselves in a hole, we're paying catch up again.
Well, it works for gas payments and electric payments on the level play plan.
Yeah.
You're gonna pay it eventually anyway. You may as well know what, what your payment's gonna be.
It, we've never had the opportunity till now. I, I mean, maybe it, twenty-one, twenty-two, the numbers started to look good, but we didn't know we had enough confidence to actually talk about, talk about these kind of things.
Well, and you've got the data and the information. I mean, you now have the inventory or developing it so you know what those future costs.
If sales tax revenue holds out, um, I think we're, we can do it.
And I do want to say, just because I know that I'm not real popular with some department heads, because I asked the inventory, all this and whatnot. And so I think I've been burned in effigy a few times, but that's fine. Cause it is, it is an enormous amount of work to get that inventory, to figure out what you have, to come up with a plan. I mean, some departments is relatively easy. Other departments, it's a nightmare. Uh, parks, there are so many different moving pieces of equipment and we use this, but we don't use that. So trust me, I, I recognize the fact it's an enormous amount of work, but it was just something that was very important. And, and so, um, I think the department heads have made an enormous effort, but we're getting close. We still don't have all the numbers, but we're getting much closer so that we can have that comprehensive database.
And, and how's it, how would this work? Because there's a good chance that you say, we're gonna implement this in twenty twenty-four. You're not gonna be able to find all that equipment in twenty-four to purchase.
Well, that's a really good point. And that's another thing that we struggle with is whether it's that or something else. We make a budget commitment and it may not sync up with the, with the budget. And we don't want to have too many reserve funds, but we set those funds aside for a reason. We gotta continue to use them for the intended purpose rather than have it.
Right. That's what I'm kinda getting at. If you know, we have this many dollars that we're, we're allocating to upgrade parked equipment, fire, whatever we talk about today. If we can't get them built in twenty twenty-four, we need to set that, again, that money aside in a, in a, you know, I use the analogy of escrow funds. So we know as we're buying those, that's coming out and not coming out of our.
Well, and that's part of, I mean, that's part of the vehicle and equipment reserve fund that we already set up to kind of do some of that. The larger equipment, I mean, you know, the front end loaders and the big stuff, the fire trucks, they are gonna take, you know, twelve, fourteen, sixteen months. Mowers and smaller equipment, that's, that stuff, we really haven't seen it impacted. And a lot of, I mean, a lot of the park stuff is stuff that I think we would get pretty quickly. Uh, fire, public work stuff, it's gonna, it's gonna be, there's gonna be some lead time, but, um, that, that actually might help us to smooth this out as we go, as we go forward.
And in my remarks, I talked about difficulties in spending. Uh, part of it, uh, fire department in particular, our history's been staff specked out that fire truck down to the nut and bolt. There's a whole different approach where there is cooperative purchasing out there. There, there's multiple manufacturers have already bid it. We can look at those and say, that's acceptable with some customization. We can try to expedite some of these purchases, not, and we can still get competitive pricing, but with a little bit different approach, we might be able to go out and buy mowers in bulk a lot better than we've done in the past.
And I don't know if you buy in bulk, if you get discounted, you would think. A lot of times there's discounts in bulk, but.
With that competitive pricing, some of those vendors are, are getting good pricing just because they, they know they're in that cooperative purchasing program. So I did reach out to Kubota directly and say, I'd love to be driving Kubota equipment in our community, but it's gotta be, you know, it still has to be price competitive and. All right. In the interest of time, we, we gotta keep moving. Um, I don't know the department's heads know it, but they're welcome to come up here as we cover their department items. And I, I'm gonna apologize in advance, gonna try to blow through this a little bit and give you an opportunity to talk about your questions, department by department. So we just took them in alphabetical order. Arts and Humanities, uh, comes first. The things we talked about, we're continuing our current programming, continuing the, the support of the sculpture tour, continuing. And, and I added in possibly expanding the support of Boom's planet, just as it grows. I think that there's an opportunity there. The Smoky Hill Museum represents a lot of maintenance issues. You're gonna see that coming out of the, um, the facility audit that you'll see on Monday. Um, it, it seems like a minor thing, but standardizing our River, River Festival cost accounting and reporting. You know, the conversation we had recently, fully recognizing, and Brad's very receptive to it, I want to give him credit for that, that everybody wants to have a good understanding of how much city funds are put in and whether it breaks even, makes money, loses money. And we have that conversation annually, but I think we're making good progress on kind of how we treat it as a project. So we can treat, we can track accounting across multiple budget years and, and give them a cleaner report on that. The Smoky Hill Museum donor campaign is something Brad's, uh, talked about for quite some time. And there's an opportunity there, um, if, need for interior space renovations, building renovations, uh, expansion as well. Eric Stein's stage is probably another grand or donor opportunity to make improvements. Oakdale Stage Two, I know some of you have heard about that secondhand and asked me questions about what's that all about? Um, and I'm on board with, with Brad's vision here of a permanent structure in place of the temporary stage two that if you're familiar with the River Festival and the nomenclature, um, that could serve not only the festival as a stage, it could be a festival headquarters, it could be a wedding venue, it could be a park space available for reservation. I almost put, grabbed a picture and put it in here and now I wish I had. But I, I would encourage you to go out and Google the venue at Madison Avenue Central Park in Derby, Kansas. It's amazing. I, I have no idea how much it costs, but it's representative of my vision of what that could be. Now, Brad has said that, you know, there's a donor opportunity there. The other thing I would tell you is. It is the venue at Madison Avenue Central Park in Derby, Kansas. And over lunch, we might be able to pop it up, but, um, and the other thing I would say, and I, I have to admit, I, I've, over my career, come around to the value of master plans and visions to get everybody, get people on board. The River Master Plans are certainly an example of that. The Downtown Master Plan is an example of that. Some things that we might want to think about are spending more on visioning, on more on just the planning, not recognizing the price tag is bigger than we ever want to spend, but let's figure out the vision and then see if we can get some momentum around that. And that's what Brad's been talking about in terms of donors, uh, grants and endowments. Um, the other things we talked about were just an Arts and Humanities Department strategic plan. We did that a while ago. It's getting a little stale and, and that could help with the vision. Museum strategic plan and community cultural plan, uh, reviewing the role and, and format of the, and I'm on the next slide now, Jacob. Reviewing the role and format of the Arts and Humanities Foundation. And then I've mentioned it multiple times, a festival foundation and, and endowment. So, um, really just want to put, put those seeds out there. Each, department by department, th- these are the results of conversations we've had. So I'm not trying to speak for the departments, but I am trying to keep us on schedule. So I want to throw this out for questions about that, as well as your feedback and brainstorming as really starts in humanities. That's not, there you go.
So that's what the Friendship Center was supposed to look like.
I'm not sure it ever got there, but it certainly doesn't today. So I want to throw it open to you as a group about Arts and Humanities in general.
Based on, uh, the email we got from you yesterday about the city competing against private, that.
Yeah.
That might, that might get into the fact that places, places now become tax exempt because the cities.
Yeah. And, and for the other commissioners that, if you're not up to speed on that, and we're just gonna have to kind of see how that plays out. But there's legislation that I, I blame Genesis. Rodney Stevens has been working on this for multiple years, trying to get a tax exemption for his private health clubs because the YMCA is tax exempt and cities compete with him. I get it. The legis, it's gotten traction in the legislature this year to where there's a whole host of categories of restaurants, entertainment, different things, health clubs, that if there's a governmental entity in a particular taxing jurisdiction that does that, then all the other private entities get a tax exemption to go along with that. And so, you know, the example that, that Phil with the county gave in his, uh, testimony to elected officials was, senior center has discounted meals, so that potentially makes all restaurants tax exempt. There is a provision in there about the timing of who came first, the government operation or the, the private operation. But it, yeah, that, I, I think that's got so many unintended consequences. I, I wouldn't hold back on what we're trying to do. We're just gonna have to see how that one plays out.
Brad gonna explain some of.
Sure. If you have questions, yeah, go ahead.
Briefly, Brad, briefly.
I heard that. We're trying to get back on time. Two things, uh, commissioners that I'd say are, are probably the highlights and the most important for Arts and Humanities to be able to plan into the future would be some kind of a community center in Oakdale Park and a museum expansion. Uh, the museum staff has, uh, we have, the museum has exceeded its capacity and we've done some preliminary work to include what if Arts and Humanities moved out and the museum got the entire building? But to find out that that only represented about fifty percent of the space they need. Uh, and so doing an addition on the back is something that, uh, some preliminary consideration has been made to enhance community gathering spaces, education space, exhibition, uh, uh, preparation and, and building. Uh, and so anyway, that's a fairly high priority and the most expensive, uh, uh, a quick estimate of that, that we're working with right now is up to ten million dollars. Um, we haven't done an assessment of what we'd ask the city to consider and what we think we're capable of raising through fundraising. But, um, but I think fundraising could help support a majority of that cost, or at least more than fifty percent. Second is the shade, or is the, uh, the, uh, the building, uh, or proposed, uh, idea for Oakdale Park. Frankly, ours wasn't quite as nice and bold as the city manager, so I'm gonna be on his team now. Um, we were thinking, we've worked with Parks a little bit to discuss revenue generation capabilities, community need year-round beyond just a festival need. Uh, it seems substantial and we even went so far as to brainstorm some possible ways of funding that throughout the year. For instance, if you rent that facility, there's a private contractor to clean and maintain the building that they're paying a portion of that cleanup fee for. Um, and, and so rather than adding to city staff to care for another structure, uh, looking at the long-term care and maintenance and what those, uh, revenue generation capabilities are, have been on our list. And before we bring anything back, uh, to you all for consideration, this is another one that I think with the history of the festival, its popularity in the community and the year-round potential for its use, that this could be a strong public-private partnership. And so we wouldn't be coming to you, uh, for the whole thing, I think. Again, a majority of, uh, our, our working budget for this is around five million dollars. At the current time, with a more simple structure, if it got larger and, 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 uh, more formal and its, uh, scale or design, uh, we were looking at a ten thousand square foot space. If that doubled, so would the cost. So that's, uh, just in terms of your attention, I think some of these other areas, we've already secured funding for the acoustic ceiling, uh, or a majority of it with some city in-kind support through, uh, parks or building services. Uh, shade structures and misting features, uh, some of those items, I believe we can, uh, cover through private contributions. And, and so it'll be an enhancement to the park, but, uh, uh, shouldn't be a budget consideration for you.
Was the Stein stage fully funded by donations or did the city participate?
I believe a majority of the Stein stage was funded through a River Festival fundraising, but that was going back thirty years. And so I'm not sure how much the city contributed at the time, uh, for, for any services. But a majority of it was privately raised.
So, and I, I want to make sure we're sharing with you the brainstorming that staff did. And you're certainly welcome to ask questions and give feedback on that. But this is, department by department, this is your opportunity, good, bad or ugly, to give your feedback on what you want us to be talking about. to give your feedback on what you want us to be talking about.
The foundation, I'm assuming allows you to raise nonprofit type monies that the city couldn't easily otherwise go after.
And in a related example that will, in, in the park side, we have an individual that, we have a group that is raising funds, willing to fund pickleball improvements. Well, you know, an expenditure that we could be making, tying it back to arts and humanities, so we could be designing the mist structure and figuring out what it looks like and what the actual cost is. So that if we have someone that indicates interest, here's how much we need. Now they have, they have a vision. They have a design. They have some confidence that if I can come up with this money, it's going to happen. Um, those are expenditures that we have always been reluctant to make previously.
Uh, I got informed about this festival endowment at the March match deal. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
I've been a huge fan of endowments and I, uh, we are strategically trying to grow our endowment fund to a $10 million balance sometime in the future. With that goal, uh, in today's dollars, that would generate enough revenue to cover all of our granting programs, all of the private donations that, uh, are generated for the Smoky Hill River Festival and, uh, also to underwrite our education programming and some other professional development programs for our department. So as, as much like you're talking about vehicles and equipment and stabilizing that, uh, I'd love a future director to be able to, uh, be able to come to work on January 1st and say, well, we've got this year's income needs in the bank. Let's program. Uh, we're not there yet. We're only about 10% of the way, uh, altogether. But, uh, we are, uh, aggressively pursuing long-term donors of the festival and of our programs to consider major gifts and estate gifts to help grow that endowment. And then to Mike's point about working with the foundation, articulating some kind of an agreement and understanding of what would that mean between the Arts and Humanities Foundation and the City of Salina that they, that the city could count on and we could budget responsibly for.
Last, last call.
All right. Alphabetically next, the city manager's office. Um, some of this I've already covered, but I'm telling you, I, I'm advocating that priority one is maintaining competitive ratings. We've talked about budget stability, um, personnel expense, budget review. What I mean by that is we, we've struggled to figure out what, um, uh, employment level we should assume in terms of budgeting. We've been conservative. That's, that's helped us in terms of our fund balance, but maybe we can dial that in tighter to free up some of those funds to, um, allocate somewhere else. Uh, replacement schedules, we've talked about all that. Economic development incentive policies, we, we have made a review of that, but, uh, further clarification, refinement. The economic development fund revenue and balance, Debbie talked about our annual allocation and the bulk of that, well, pretty much all that's gone by the time you fund the EDO's annual budget, the SDI, uh, facade grants. There, there was a goal of, of building an economic development fund balance. So we had some cash, uh, to respond to prospects and, and incentives. And we've done that out of general fund, but, um, being able to get, kind of get that reestablished would be helpful. Um, I ain't sure it's politically correct anymore, but homelessness, uh, is a topic. I'm not proposing to you a solution as much as that's a policy conversation that, uh, if you as the governing body want to take that up. Um, within that there's support services. Um, and when we get to development services, I think community relations might be able to play a role. There's the whole downtown bathroom, just conversation about uses and cleanliness. I don't have a solution for you there. And that, uh, for lack of trying to do some research. And then mental health court is, uh, something that's come up in conversation with, uh, our, uh, judge and prosecutor. I've broached the subject with the county. I think there might be an opportunity there for some specialized, um, and rather than just fines and imprisonment programs and, and, uh, trying to address the underlying mental health issues that go along with homelessness. Um, childcare, that's a whole nother community conversation. Again, I don't have a solution for you and I'm not necessarily proposing that, that the city take the lead, but that is something that, that's certainly in the conversation. Um, community space needs collaboration with Saline County. Staff's had some conversation with Phil, uh, and, and his staff with the county. As you know, they've got new district court judges. They're trying to move things around within the city county building and, and they've got some challenges they're trying to address. Uh, we've got Memorial Hall. We've got the, the senior center. They're moving out of the law enforcement center. The sheriff's space, um, is, is possibly available and, and I've indicated some preliminary interest in the part of the police department. Um, I proposed to Phil that we really need a, a community space assessment of some sort. And he was, his response was, I like the idea. It's probably going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars before, uh, we're done just to size that up. Um, that, that's another instance of sticker shock, but as we looked at an aerial map, it just felt to me like we were at, at the municipal county complex, it felt like we were looking for open spaces and we were going around the clock, abandoning old buildings between, you know, Memorial Hall and the senior center, community corrections and law enforcement center and the senior center. I, and I think we have to take a look at that somehow. As Brad's talking about open space earlier, extra space for the museum. I'm thinking maybe we move the museum to the memorial hall. We've written it off as, as a lost cause, but is it, if we're going to make investment anyway, should we be thinking about that? Um, moving on, boards and commissions review, we've talked about that previously, looking at their role, their purpose, on their membership, their bylaws. That's a pretty daunting task, but something that, um, has come up before. Commissioner orientation refinements, um, as a staff, we continue to try to improve that or at least refine it. But if you have feedback about, you know, what you like, what you don't like, what, what you want to see added or deleted, we're certainly open to that. Paperless packets has been a conversation for a while. I've kind of been putting that off until we can get those, the website and agenda management software in place, but I think we're, we're making headway there and might be able to get the paperless packets. Process for donation requests and public-private partnerships. Um, I feel like we've, we've got a lot of successes with public-private partnerships to point to. Um, it feels to me like the conversation shifted just a little bit and I'm just going to be frank. I, there's three examples recently where staff, what got presented to you as the city commission, what got presented or is going to be presented in the very near future has financial asks that are catching staff by surprise. I don't know if that's intentional or unintentional on their part, but they're showing up to you at the dais, hitting you cold with a funding request that we've not been able to staff through. And so, you know, much like the, the facility naming policy kind of came out of frustration about that process. I think we're probably on the verge of trying to put some structure to these kinds of requests. Um, and not saying that they aren't valid, not saying that you're making the wrong decisions, but I, I, I'm just not comfortable having someone put you as the governing body on the spot with little no details and making the kind of financial ass they're making of you. Um, reviewing outside agency support, that's something that we, we talk about pretty, uh, annually. But, um, we could delve into a little bit more to give you a sense of what we're doing for some outside organizations. Review of transient guest tax funding, uh, with the turf, with the, um, line of tennis request. Um, I'm forgetting another one, but the, oh, we have a potential request coming from this line of liberty, I think for funding. I think we need to take a deeper dive into transit guest tax revenue projections, what we committed, just how we allocate all that and, and, uh, make sure we're dialed in. And then maybe these are my pet projects and you've heard me talk about them before, but I, I want to get our house in order and not just walk away from things. I think we have, and just in terms of demolition, things that are out in our system that, that are not being used and are not aging very well. Uh, tenant, some of the tennis courts in Sunset and a portion of the tennis courts at, at Oakdale, abandoned horseshoe pits in, in Sunset, and then the old pool at Oakdale, which would potentially be the site for a, a stage two type project. And again, I think you, if we clear that out and we make it turf, it starts that vision, that conversation that, hey, something else could go there. Um, those are relatively easy to get, um, you know, designed, put out the bid and, and make happen. Um, we kind of balked at those in, in our last conversation, so I'm bringing it back up, I guess. Um, with that, I'll pause on the city manager's side.
So if you wanted to provide guidance on these three, you could tell us to get rid of them right now and we'll have it, we'll start working on it.
Well, yeah, um.
But I, I, this is not a new, and, and it's no reflection on, because it's going to tie into development services. That department is too big. I mean, if you look at the breadth of services, it's just hard to imagine one department head having the time, let alone expertise to cover everything from bathroom, from homeless to coding, rewrites to seeking out development. I mean, it's, I just, I think we need a, and I come up with, with every name you want, but community services, social services department separate from the more technical, high dollar, you know, public issues of true development, coding and, and all that. It's, it's just an unwieldy place to have all that in one area.
Coming up there.
Well, yeah, no, I, I looked over at Lauren and it's no reflection of her, but I mean, you know, how can I expect her to, you know, be meeting with, with the Donald Trumps of the world and, and what men, I know, bad example. But, and then, you know, and then, you know, uh, someone who wants to put in porta potties downtown is just totally different perspectives.
And, and I'm going to make note of that as a brainstorming item because we, there's, that merits discussion. The one thing I do want to go on record though, is if we're going to pick anybody to try to tackle it, it would be long. And, you know, part of it, we're relying on division heads, uh, but, and we, we'd have one particular position that was a department head position and then it was turned into a division head position. So it becomes organizational, financial, but I, I understand your point. And the last thing we need to do is drive Lauren into an early grave.
Right. And, and budgetary approaches for those different types of services are, are, are different. One, you're going to work with other organizations, nonprofits. The other, it's, well, it's development and, you know, state capital and all the US senators and.
I, I really heard two things there. One's, uh, expanded cultural, social programming. The other is organization of the department, uh, not overwhelmed.
After that, that she, Lauren doesn't deal with the Donald Trumps. She deals with the Maxwell Reivers.
That's harder.
I have a question here with the downtown bathrooms. I'm guessing that is not a requirement that we provide that, that is a, started out as a nice amenity. Is that correct? Something?
I, I think so. The one thing I would tell you is it is societally, it's become a human rights issue. Um, as part of the conversation of providing basic services to the unhoused. So there's a whole nother school of thought that, and then there's the practical aspect of it. If you don't provide it, it's going to, you're still going to have it happen somewhere.
It's, it's tough issue, but, uh.
But it's like a mall, you know, you go into a mall and you have to go to the bathroom. You know, a lot of stores, a restroom, if they have them, customers only. I mean, it's, you know, when you need that service, you need it, uh, you know.
I don't want my daughter taking my grandsons in those bathrooms. That's where we're at.
Yeah. And I think there's a couple of things going on, just the condition of them, the cleanliness of them, the construction of them, which I, I, I think you could say that across the bulk of our park system. And, and if you haven't been in the south bathrooms at Bill Burke, I'd encourage you to make a dedicated trip to go check them out. That park staff renovated those and that's an example of where we're headed. So from a smell, cleanliness, ventilation, lighting, I think we have a solution there from a, you know, users and, and leaving behind drug paraphernalia, that's a much harder one to solve.
And I guess my concern that I've been hearing a lot of feedback about is the Seventh Street bathroom, which I've come to the conclusion, we need to just tear it down.
There's more than one Seventh Street bathroom too.
I know, but the south one is the one has the biggest issues.
Well, then you move the problem to another bathroom.
So I'm looking to identify topics if, and we can, if that's a, you know, priority. I don't even know what resources I'm going to draw on, but it's a whole conversation.
I haven't been to Europe in decades, but it used to be, I remember there were public restrooms on sidewalks.
You had to pay a quarter, didn't you?
If you have to go to the bathroom, a quarter is a small price to pay. I think these were free. I, I mean, and just.
I'm not going to say there aren't lessons to be learned out there. Myself and other staff have committed about a day's time doing that research and nothing jumped out at me as a quick, easy solution to the underlying drug issues and mental health issues, but we do have to maintain our facilities.
I'd be happy to volunteer to go on an exploratory mission to Europe if that's something.
When I was young, we used to have to carry a dime with us because public, well, it's cost a dime. I don't know if that ever reached rural areas, but we knew when we left home, have a dime in your pocket in case you have.
And you have to crawl under the stall door.
Or that was the other plan B, right?
Any other city manager office items?
Item is Memorial Hall. We're, we're getting in a situation. St. John's Hospital is an example of a dilapidated building in a community eyesore. And people want Memorial Hall preserved. And we're not doing that. And if we don't, we're going to end up with another St. John's.
Understood. The, the, uh, again, I'm trying not to bog down in the discussion right now, but previously we had guidance that it was too age to invest in. But with all this conversation about community redevelopment and some of the numbers that are flying around now in terms of building facilities, are we willing to pay a premium? Are we willing, number one, to assess it in terms of its redevelopability, if that's a word? And then are we willing to pay a premium, um, to accomplish that? So I think the, when I talked about a community space assessment, my vision was going into Memorial Hall, having someone that's an expert go into it and say, here's what, what can be done. One of the biggest challenges with, is with it, is that open gym in the middle. The feedback we got was you'd almost have to build a structure inside a structure, but that's not impossible. So.
Was some of that done when the esports people had come up with their?
Yeah. We, we put, we put the word out that I, I was, was pretty open saying, if you have a plan for it, I'll advocate to sell it to you for a dollar. And part of it was, uh, multifamily redevelopment took a look, but that open space was the challenge for them. The esports was going to make use of that space, but that, that project just kind of died on the vine.
Other item I had was the paperless packets. Now this unit you have, Jacob, is, you have your packet. Did you get your packets on that?
Um, I can put my packets on this, but I don't think this is the device that you would want to use because it's not very user friendly as, as far as scrolling through a packet. Uh, but I do think once we go paperless, I think we can do some tests and figure out, you know, what's the most appropriate. Lots of places go with iPads. They issue an iPad to commissioners or, or board members and download them that way. But, um, there's other, there's other options available. We just haven't really explored that.
My concern with that is not so much the paper, but, but ink is the cost. Waste a lot of ink.
Well, the, the issue is, are you able to set it up such that you can highlight or make notes? That's the, you know, because that's what.
One thing can just print what you need.
Yeah, there, there's cert, I think there are options where we can, you know, go down that road and figure out what the functionality is. What's the functionality, I guess, that we need? And then, and then kind of back into it.
And we're on the back end of this curve. There's plenty of opportunities we can learn from.
There was a little bit of opposition from a couple of members, but factually evaporated. Once they were able to discover that, you know, they could search throughout the entire packet and go straight to it rather than having to flip and everything else. So that's a huge advantage, being able to do that. And then being able to, to mark it up and to share that with other people multiple times. So you're not constantly having to keep track of that. So, uh, there are some growing pains through that, but I, I think most people found that it was very beneficial to be able to do that.
So where are we on the, uh?
Agenda management? I'm sorry. I should have let you finish your sentence. Sorry.
Agenda software.
Yeah. You, you want to take that one, Jacob?
Yeah. So I, we're, we're working with the contractor to get the agreement in place. So we, so we haven't started, uh, the actual process of, you know, getting them on board. We're very close to that.
What about the website?
Website, we are. Website, we are, I don't have an exact timeline, but in, it's a matter of weeks. Uh, I, I don't, I don't think it'll be more than maybe, maybe five, six weeks. I, uh, we're, so we're very close. We've got all the, the pages are all developed. What we're doing right now is we're putting all the department information in. And so each department's kind of going through and looking at what they need and updating it. And so we're, we're just in that phase right now, but I, it's, uh, it's getting very close.
Last call in city manager's office.
So did you? I didn't know. Did we say we're doing these?
Demolishing? He's trying, he's trying to push you beyond just talking.
There was a picture on the old time page the other day. Commissioner Davis said not, didn't realize that was a pool. I got a picture of it to show you that someone put on that old time page.
Well, and not only that, but the artwork and Brad can explain it better than I can, but the, the artwork in that pool, um, identifies the footprint of, the overall pool was the, the community pool, and then there was the blacks only pool that had, that footprint is called out within that artwork. So what we've talked about is commemorating that or, or keeping that history in some other fashion. So, and sorry, yeah, that we, we're going to run out of daylight.
All lights.
Yeah, that one's.
So Jacob's wanting an answer on those three. I can tell. Only ask wise. The, the quick question on the tennis courts. There's been discussion of allowing the, I call them the south ones to remain. Um, and part of that be used for pickleball. Is that included?
No, the, that conversation is productive and we'll touch on that in parks, but we have a donor that we are going out to bid for design of that facility so that we can then put it out to bid, get a cost. The donor is willing to cover that cost. So that would be demolition of the north courts and putting pickleball on the south courts.
I guess that's my question. We're in the interim, I guess, on the demolition, are you just doing the north courts for now?
Yeah, that would be the intention.
Okay. In that case, I'm, I'm fine with that, I guess.
Commissioner?
I am, yeah. And that was my understanding that the north the south reconfigured.
So we, yeah, we've got, if, if you're open to that, we will start working this up and bring it back for your packing. Um, there's some more tennis conversation to be had, but that, that's the vision at the moment.
I know we're possibly behind, but.
Bathroom break?
Five minutes?
Sure.
Okay. I just.
All right. We'll jump into computer technology. Scott Gardner, newly appointed department head, longtime interim director. In the meantime, has been applying his CPI skills to the, the computer technology department in particular. And so some of this is, I don't know that we need to get into the, the mechanics of it, but suffice it to say, he's serving the whole organization across a whole lot of platforms and it all costs quite a bit of money. Um, AS400, old outdated system that we are trying to transition off of and we're getting there, but it's a little problematic. Uh, disaster recovery facilities and strategy. Um, we're in the basement of the city county building. It is subject to flooding. We've actually seen that happen before. We have kind of a disaster response plan, but physically I don't know that we're in the, the best shape that we could be. Um, you're seeing the replacement strategies and budgets there. Same theme across the organization. We have equipment, hardware, and we also have software that's pretty sizable within the CT department. Um, upgrade to Microsoft 365. That's a big expense, but we wait too long and we're behind the curve there. Um, we've talked about meeting management, paperless packets, possibly monitors at, at your, your DAS, uh, possible technology upgrades. Um, the other thing that reminds me of and kind of came up this morning is, you know, we, when we're offsite, like for a meeting like this, we're able to record it and then post it after the fact, but we're not broadcasting live. And so that's a possibility. Did the mic go off? Oh, all right. Sorry. Um, so it seems like it's come up a time or two when we've had offsite meetings or is this going out live? We don't have the, the hardware and technology for that. That, if that's a priority, that would be something to, to investigate and invest in. Um, it kind of tangentially relates to CT, but Scott's been having conversations in the organization about some type of centralized approach to, to receiving calls, um, in the city county building or the organization versus, um, having multiple receptionists across the organization. Uh, organizationally, getting it implemented is a challenge. And then there's a kind of a service level question there. Um, reloc- relocating the media relations, uh, division to CT. We absorbed sign of media connection or we dissolved, disbanded sign of media connection and, and added some staff. They've been in city manager's office in the interim, but our intent is to, to move them over to CT. Um, and then that brings with it miscellaneous equipment needs, technology for the offsite meetings. Uh, community branding, um, and the graphical social media side, I think they're doing a good job already in term of graphically. We can do community branding and we can do community surveying technology. There are platforms out there and vendors out there that could allow us to do surveying if we like. Um, contracting for specialized support services. I think Scott and his staff are very motivated and tried to do everything they can in-house, but there are some things that, uh, would merit contracting out. And then there's some capacity issues. If we're willing to set aside some funds to allow them to do that, that lets, it gives them capacity to do other things. Um, and then they've made a request for, um, one additional staff person. And, uh, just trying to balance their load and, and their responsibilities and not looking for a decision today. You're going to see a lot of staff requests before the, by the time we get through all this, that's probably a whole, um, a tabulation for your consideration, uh, as a decision point.
Is this, is this an example of offsite meeting or is it meeting live offsite?
No, I mean, outside of the city county building 107, um, if we want to be able to broadcast that, um, in real time, we don't have that technology. Um, you know, we did the, the homeless forums and I think we brought in some outside resources for that, but, uh, we're just really not equipped, fully equipped to, uh, since we're in our infancy a little bit. Scott, is there anything you wanted to add?
Is the branding analogous to what the chamber's been doing? Cause we, they seem like two or three different brands. I don't know which one to promote as the official Solana tagline and.
Uh, well, that's a good point. The, for me, it, it's more kind of our graphical image, but you can take branding to a.
That was city of Solana government branding.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, yeah, right, right, right. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm not, uh, I'm not suggesting that we do the community wide. And if we did, that'd probably be outside the CT department. And frankly, it'd probably be a consultant. All right. Development Services. Tried to break this out by divisions and we don't necessarily have an administration division, but also then we have kept things that, that don't neatly fit within a division. So obviously you're aware of our housing project, where that's at. I think you've acknowledged how much work that represents for Lauren and her staff. We have the state grant, we have the RHIDs, uh, the infill housing conversation that we had recently, which that's a, a heavy, heavy lift, um, in terms of trying to figure that out. Special event permitting, um, I have to give Lauren credit. She recognized the DRT approach that we use was analogous to special event permitting. And I think it was just a pain point that she had finally decided that, but if it's going to be this painful for me, let's solve it once, or let's address it. But that, uh, the process itself is still, uh, being refined. I think we're a long ways down that. And then administration of that is, is a big undertaking. Um, alcohol code updates. Uh, it seems to me that Kansas has one of the most complicated alcohol codes around as a state. And now they've modified it further with, uh, common consumption areas. So we, we need to get synchronized. That's, uh, that's an undertaking for development services and a little bit of involvement with city clerk's office, but, uh, primarily development services. Comprehensive scanning, uh, we've been doing that incrementally and making good progress, but we're trying to get all of our paper plans and files and documents scanned, not only just to get rid of the paper, but to get it automated and laser fished and searchable, accessible, um, and just get into the 20th century. Software upgrades, feels like we just bought building permit software and got it implemented and got comfortable with it, but it's, there's a better opportunity out there. Our website provider has some functionality that has development services in particular, really excited. Um, that's going to bring, bring with it some cost, but I think it'll bring with it a lot of efficiencies and customer service as well. Um, permitting software, process automation improvements. Again, that's a, something that Lauren's mindful of, but, uh, an ongoing task. Records retention, in addition to scanning, we, we need to clarity in terms of what records we need to keep and for how long and, and, uh, get all that sorted out. And then grant administration, we have a handful of grants. The, the department does a good job of administering today, but it's, it's pretty labor intensive and, and there might be opportunities for improvement there. Um, on the building code side, we, there's just that ongoing code cycle of adoption. 2018 is in the works. Um, and that, that's a huge undertaking, mechanical plumbing, electrical, um, energy code, uh, one by one, looking at those and staffing it through the building advisory board. Uh, park bathroom fixture counts is something that came up recently, part of the, uh, the tennis court, uh, bathhouse question and, and it's really just a code amendment that we need some attention. Um, open excavation is something that building services has identified as a, a pain point for them that they want to address. Um, infrastructure required prior to permit issuance. Um, you might help refresh my memory there, but I, well, go ahead.
Well, this is always the challenge with new housing developments of at what point does infrastructure need to be in place before we start issuing building permits?
And so we've, we've tried, we've taken an approach in Southview in particular, working with them to allow them to build while the infrastructure is not, uh, is being constructed. That's caused a lot of questions about, are there going to be roads? Are there going to be streetlights? But trying to balance that, um, uh, that timing and rather than be linear, um, uh, work with them without taking too much risk. Um, tire storage is a topic of regulation, trailers in front yards, um, salvage yard licensing, manufactured home park licensing. Some of those are, are things that have been ongoing challenges and uh, I talked earlier about lack of capacity. Um, these all have merit, but I'm not sure it's realistic to think Lauren and her staff are going to be able to do all those. And, uh, I'm, I keep resorting to, let's bring in consultants, but a lot of this is local policy decision-making that consultants can help to some extent, but they might not be able to get them, get us across the finish line.
But these things, we, we have codes on the book now. It's just a matter of revising them or the?
Some yes, some no. Some, some we have codes that we think need revision. Um, the salvage yard licensing, manufactured home park licensing, um, either we've got a moratorium on manufactured home licensing and salvage yard licensing. I don't think they, we're where we want to be. And there is a code, but I don't think we're where we want to be.
Tire store, tire storage, for instance, is just, you know, they're very expensive for us and a lot of times when people call in property abatement issues, tires are one of the most expensive things that we pick up when we pick up junk and trash. And so the question is, is that something that we need to make a priority? They have mosquitoes, things like that. Trailers in front yards, you know, you can have nice trailers, but we're not allowing people to park their vehicles. But somebody's like, well, hey, where do you want me to put my boat trailer? And so there's this whole question of like people's use of their properties versus kind of what is neighborhood appropriate? And then the licensing process for both salvage yards and manufactured homes and manufactured homes in particular, because it's on a current moratorium, both need attention and care, particularly manufactured homes. It's kind of a, it's a complex piece. There are a lot of different federal and state regulations that cross into the realm of manufactured homes. And as we talk about housing, it's a little hard to ignore that topic. And I think the other thing I'd put on kind of this whole building services code, uh, compliance section is one of the things for budgeting that would be very helpful to me and my team is to really understand when we've heard from the commission, hey, we want you guys to, to do more uh, code compliance work. I'd be happy to put together a little survey everybody could fill out, but what code compliance work looks like to you would be very helpful for me. Is it, hey, make sure everybody's painted up? Is it just junk and trash and weeds? Is it in op vehicles? Is it dangerous structures? Okay. Within dangerous structures, is that, do, do we ignore the ones that are occupied by a human? Do we go after the vacant ones? And why I ask that is not only does it help me direct our resources, but it also helps me budget because each of those things have different costs. It's, it's a good thing, but one of the things that came about with a green belt project that got done in our office is the warrant process has gotten very efficient for in op vehicles. We are now getting more inoperable vehicles than ever before. And PD hadn't noticed that they were paying for those toes. And now that we do enough of them, they called up earlier last year and they were like, hey, hey, you guys should be paying for these. We were like, oh, that's probably right. So, I mean, so when we go to, when somebody calls and says, hey, there's junk and trash over there, I, I not only look at what's in the yard, I start to add the dollars up. Each toe is a hundred and fifty bucks. Each pile of tires is two hundred and eighty bucks. Each trip to the dump, you know, those types of things. So understanding where the commission wants those priorities is very helpful for our staff on kind of where we spend that budget. Well, majority of the time we do, but I think it's safe to say that I'm looking at Debbie too. We don't always ever, we don't always see that money back. Sometimes we go and we assess something and you know, there's, there's a hope that it gets paid back.
Property tax at some point.
But that may take three years or it may not be a one for one recoup if it goes for sheriff sale and.
Yeah. Well, it'd be recouped at sheriff's sale. You have to pay taxes at sheriff's sale.
Um, yeah, the, the liens, I'm not so sure. The liens that we put on it, I'm not sure, but even if they do, it's not a one for one back to their line item. It just kind of rolls.
They should be adding an administrative fee to it also.
We do.
We do. Um, it's small and that is probably something that we can look at and see if it's appropriate, but there's a fine line between kind of.
And being small is relative. It depends on your perspective. You're from the. Too high.
Staff time it takes to pass that. It's probably a break even.
Yeah.
So that's the thing. It's, I look at my budget and if I've got $300,000 to do abatements that year, I'm not going, well, do I get, you know, will I see that $300,000 next year? Cause anything that comes back from those liens or those abatements being applied to the properties goes back to the general fund. So to me, it's just making sure, did I get the most amount of work, particularly commission priorities with those dollars that were allocated?
Could we get a study session on what actually is allowed in code? Cause I, I'll drive past a house and I'll see stuff on the front porch, the yard. And I don't know, maybe it's not against our, our code.
Yes. Actually, Jacob, well, Jacob just went to the next slide. So additional funding for abatement is there. And in, in response to your question, what I'm proposing is that we need a legal review of property maintenance code. And had a conversation with city legal counsel. When we adopted the, we started on the path of adopting the international property maintenance code, standardized code. We're going to adopt it with very minimal revisions. Um, legal review of case law in Kansas. There were quite a few conclusions about, there, there is case law that basically limits our authority, severely limits our authority to life, health and safety items. So nuisance in the front yard, things that have detrimental impact on property values may not necessarily be upheld. Uh, peeling paint in and of itself, aesthetic issues in and of themselves may not be upheld. The conversation that I've had with the city attorney is what can we do in terms of a legal review if we say we want to be as aggressive as possible? We want to position ourselves, uh, in any way possible. Um, what we talked about is can we create a rebuttable presumption? We start with the presumption that this is subject to enforcement because, and put the burden on the, the violator to refute that. We got to balance that with case law, but if we really want to meet the expectations of someone driving down the street, I, I think we, we don't have that in our current code. And I'm not blaming legal counsel. The, and I was part of that adoption at the time and I read the case law that they're, they were citing and it was on point. It's just counterintuitive to what the average person thinks is a code violation. That's not to say that there aren't code violations out there to be enforced, but if we're really going to hit the mark as I think the expectation is, we need to start with a re-review of our code adoption. Then we can answer your question of when you drive by is what's a code violation and what isn't. Um, so then the other thing, you know, examples that have come up time and time again are secured but abandoned structures and, and the examples obviously are ambassador. And, and the examples obviously are ambassador of Penn campus. Our approach by code is if they're boarded up and, you know, the people will break in and they have to be re-boarded up. But if they're secured from the exterior, they're not a life, health and safety issue and they can sit there. And they've, those two in particular have certainly sat there a long time. The question comes up, can we do something about that? That's a legal question that we need to review and solve.
Even boarded up, does mold and presumed vermin running around on the inside not constitute a health issue?
Well, if it's not occupied, it doesn't. I mean, another example I can give you is a residential home that hadn't been occupied for years, had trash bags lined up along the, the exterior, the, the back of the house. And the court determination was trash bags in and of themselves are not a health issue. If you see vermin, if you see rodents, if you, if it's contributing in some other way, because we tried to get a search warrant and go in and, and address it. And we couldn't. And we told the neighbors, if you see any of this, let us know. That then crosses the threshold where it's actionable. But, but just sitting there, not contributing to life, health and safety issues, the premise is they can do that.
Vermin and infestation is kind of a unique category because if the vermin have left the building, they're starting to affect neighboring properties is where it can become an issue.
Other things along those lines are, the other struggle we have, and I think Lauren might have touched on it, is abating occupied structures. You identify an issue that needs to be resolved and it's occupied. Roof, porch, what have you, that gets really problematic. And then rental property registration, that's another legal question. At the state level, they've enacted quite a bit of legislation about, and it protects private property rights and really ties our hands. But having said that, there are other communities that, that are, you know, out in that, those areas and doing things. That may take a legal review as well. The other thing that I think helps move this forward, recognizing this has been a priority for the commission for a while, is additional dedicated staffing. Lauren, as part of the CPI process that Lauren's done, she's demonstrated their, capacity wise, they're producing tall grass and weeds and nuisance vehicles. The citations are going out the door. And then you start dealing with dangerous structures and sites with the extension violations and habitual violators. Those are, are just that much more complicated. If we really want to do it, I think we take some, we add some staff and say, you're a dangerous. I'm, I'm calling it ADD, abandoned, demolished and derelict properties, or dangerous and derelict properties. They're almost a category in and of themselves. So that's a possible consideration. Moving to community relations, they, they've got a handful of things they're working on currently. One of, one of the added items is reviewing, revising and updating chapter thirteen. That's kind of our equal opportunity chapter and listed there the different topics that are in that. ADA transition plan may not be something that you're familiar with. We started it in the nineties. And when ADA was first enacted, and so there's a community assessment of facilities and their ADA compliance and there's a punch list that, that's been worked on. A lot of it's met, but we have an obligation to do an ongoing review of, of facilities and make improvements. And it's everything from door widths to counter heights to in, in city facilities. That's a sizable task. The emergency services grants have been going through the department. I think Lauren's proposed that this division could be tasked with that and, and take that on. An idea they came up with was an eviction self-help center. They do housing issues and they get a lot of calls about, you know, I'm subject to eviction, what are my options? What does that mean? A lot of just education, not necessarily advocacy on one side or the other, but education. And then they might be a division that can be the point on homelessness. Not to solve the problem necessarily, but it kind of fits into their wheelhouse and, and they might be able to be the lead force there.
And self-help, that doesn't fall under the human relations department?
It does. Yeah, this, the human relations is within this. What they're talking about.
So that falls under development services. Also, I think that's what Grant was getting to. There's, there's just a lot of different umbrellas that fall under.
At one point it was its own department. And then in transition, it got rolled in, of department heads, it got rolled into development services as a division.
So basically it's the fair, it's the civil rights enforcement piece of the city. So we enforce not externally, but then we have things internally. So, but we look at externally, we handle fair housing, equal opportunity employment, ADA compliance. They have been handling the emergency solutions grant or ESG since the department came out of the pandemic. I also am looking at them as a place that we could handle the infill housing program from. They, they're really set up to kind of have that intake, to interview, to, to manage that grant paperwork and go through that process. One of the things Michelle Martin, our manager for that division brought up is, you know, we handle a fair housing part, but a lot of times it's landlords tend to act stuff that's getting questioned. We can't enforce or advocate on somebody's behalf. We provide them with information, answer basic questions. But one of the things we've seen is best practice in other communities and it's fairly, you know, it's not a major budget ask and it's really, it's, it is self-help. So we're not staffing it, but it's something we would help put together and, and do a little maintenance on is one of these eviction centers, just to help people kind of understand what that is. Typically they're available at libraries.
Planning and zoning is also in development services. The, the big three in terms of documents are our comprehensive plan and it's outdated and needs an update. We have strategically said, put the, the year in there. We're not necessarily proposing it, it's immediate, but it's on the horizon. So comprehensive plan update, and then right behind the heel of that, that, that's kind of the broader vision, future land use planning. Then the zoning code needs to sync up with that and the subdivision regulations need to sync up with that. Your, each one of those involve outside consultants and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Just as a reference point, I checked this morning, zoning code hasn't been comprehensively updated since nineteen seventy-seven.
So the other topics there.
Graduated high school.
I wasn't born yet. It's, we, it's, this is a thing we have to probably get to, okay?
And, and the comp plan, the comp plan's more recent than that. It articulated a vision and it's left us challenged to have the zoning code sync up. But we end up doing a lot of plan development districts, a lot of amendments to get zoning approvals to match the comp plan vision. If, if, and that was a money issue. We, we were barely able to scrape together the money for the comp plan and then we never funded the zoning code updates.
So you bring an outside consultant in to do.
Yeah, they'll do community, correct processes, vision, visioning processes and while we're on the topic, Lauren and I've talked about this before. The, the demographic that was not included in the last comp plan that was to our own detriment was the development community and the real estate community. They, we got their feedback when the comp plan was adopted and it was time to implement it. And it was, it was difficult. It, it, they should have been in the conversation from the outset. So that's my one overarching resolve going forward.
Well, and a comp plan is literally a capital expense when you see a community budget for it, because it's, it has a ten-year shelf life. So we're actually past our, our shelf life of that document. And it, even a big department, even a big city hires a consultant to do it because the amount of work that goes into getting a document like that done can't be done and do a day job.
Yeah, it's, it's planning expertise and it's graphical preparation, it's meeting facilitation. And backing up to the development community. They weren't intentionally or unintentionally left out. It just felt like they didn't engage. And we've got to engage them if it's going to work. Sign code update for murals. We kind of learned that lesson recently that, that's kind of a new thing that's on our horizon. Airbnb, if you've been paying attention to other communities, Lawrence in particular, they've been addressing that more so than us. But that's an issue that probably merits attention.
And on, on the Airbnb code, does that also include transient guest tax? What does that fall under? Because I don't believe our, our local Airbnbs collect the transient guest tax, am I correct?
There are regulations about what does and doesn't qualify. I don't know off the top of my head. It seems like we looked at that a while back.
Is that a local code or is that a state? I didn't know what code was and how we, again.
And we can, we can track that down.
Something to think about with the Airbnb though, is how many do we really have? Lawrence is, is a great example. If they're having Airbnbs all the time because of sporting events and things like that. There is a cost benefit breakpoint on regulating Airbnbs. That's one more thing for us to permit, one more thing for us to monitor. And if you've got ten of them out there.
I think we have more than we think we have.
Well, and, and that's the question is maybe the first step is just assessing where are we at with them and what are, what are their impacts?
We do a lot of license agreements and, and we can get better in terms of that process. Cell towers is another one that we can make process improvements. City acceptance and detention ponds. Our current policy is if a developer is willing to pay the estimated cost of maintenance for ten years, they can dedicate it to us and it'll be ours in perpetuity. If, the starting point of that is revisiting whether we, even that, that's prudent or the development should be responsible long-term. Salina has a history of not having homeowners associations and not making provision for maintenance long-term. But that becomes a policy decision that we really should take up. And then abandoned signs enforcement, I know that we've had some feedback specifically about that. And that's kind of a targeted approach that would be an added responsibility that staff probably doesn't have the capacity for at the moment.
Homeowners association issue brought up. I noticed in some of our conversations with the, you know, we've had to redo the finance. The homeowners association should have had a role in it, but it was never constituted and they just sort of, well, nobody cared, nobody asked, nobody enforced.
I wouldn't say that struggling homeowners associations are unique to Salina by any means, but there, in other communities, there's much more of a presumption that there's going to have to be a homeowners association along with the creation of the subdivision to address things that Salina has a history of trying to take on as a city responsibility. And we probably ought to think about getting out of that business.
Definitely should. And I think we may be able to get to it a little sooner than twenty twenty-seven. Or at least in the plating process. It's kind of deciding, you know, what is proof of those being set up? But sometimes, you know, we've linked certain regulations to the homeowners association and what's in its bylaws in order to enforce things that maybe we've desired of that neighborhood. And once we kind of marry those things up, we then have a relationship with those bylaws. So I think in updating the plating process, at least we would try to have less of a relationship with HOAs. Those are meant to really be their own thing. And if they're upset about something, then they can take legal civil action.
Is there low lying fruit that could be done this year? That's why I characterize it as that.
In some respects, it would, it may be oversimplifying, but in the homeowners association, it starts with kind of a policy decision of what's the expectation? And then we can start delivering that expectation to developers.
We have some of those relationships that won't go away until Larry Joy go away. But Dustin Hertz and I are working on our green belt projects and they are a combination dealing with plating process. So I would envision plating will be done in this next year, year and a half, starting now, going into the next fiscal year. So we may see some of that done. Others may have to be in the subdivision regulations.
So anything you want to add and then we'll throw it open to questions?
Sure.
I see you have dates on here for some of these plans. When do we address the neighborhood revitalization map? When does that get updated?
Every five years?
Yeah, so it'll happen this June. We are going to be adding more of Mid-Salina and I have a couple other pieces.
I think you, you know my, my thoughts on that. I think we need to expand that because I know there's individuals that are looking to upgrade neighborhoods and I think with a little bit of a push that we can get more individuals to do that. Which, this is a whole different conversation, but it appears that the million dollars that the county was going to do for housing is not going to be used on, at this point. How is that money set up? Do they control that or was that, okay?
In fact, I don't want to speak for Phil with the county, but he, on an ongoing basis, he's trying to balance all the requests he has for those funds. So I, I think the lack of use, I don't think that's reserved for our housing projects. He has competing requests. And if, if our current project's not going to take advantage of it, he's probably going to redirect it elsewhere.
I would like to see that stay in housing if we could, because they've, and if we could come up with some plan to use that to help some of our, our, some of our neighborhoods, I think that would be beneficial.
I've had a few just preliminary conversations with him about maybe trying to take some of that in ear market for our infill housing program that we talked about a few weeks ago. And it's very preliminary, so I don't know what their plans are. But I do believe they've had more requests from other parties outside. So I'm not sure what that money will really look like when it gets down to time to spend.
To me, they, they kind of set that money aside to help with, with some, you know, blighted air, you know, a blighted area. And I think we have those out there and I think they could make, that million dollars could make a significant impact in the community. And I think people would be, if we could figure a program for it to be used. So I think as a city, we should approach them about at least keeping part of that to help blighted neighborhoods.
And we'll do that sooner rather than later. And I, I agree with the value in that. I do want to give them credit. The county has very much taken a, a grant administration, get the funds out in the community approach to their ARPA dollars and, and they.
Write a grant for a million dollars for. Okay, that's all I had.
Anything else?
After hearing all this list, I can kind of see advantages of breaking this department up. That's a lot.
A lot when you have twenty people doing this much work. I mean, it's not a lot for a director to have that many people. We have departments such as public works and parks and utilities that have plenty of people in one director. The question is, how many people does it take to do this work? And that's something I've been working with my team a lot in the last couple of months is workload analysis. I did a CPI project with Scott. Just, you just created another planning position last year, but as a heads up, it actually takes two and a half planners in addition to what we have. So you've got added one. It's actually another one and a half short. I have that consistently through everything.
How long did it take you to fill the position we created?
Yes, a while.
And things not just the number of heads you have, but the orientation that person brings. And some of these may be in your division heads. And I think some of the vision heads would, in a previous time, been department level heads. Cause some of these problems are going to require department head status to, to really tackle because they themselves will be supervising not just in-house folks, but community organization and relationships.
And I, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you. There are division heads that work under Lauren. The, the converse of that is some of these divisions, it's advantageous to have a department head over the division to force collaboration, force planning across jurisdictions.
Realistically and strategically, we have to kind of just make two choices. And I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but we came out of a pandemic and we have a housing problem. I stepped up and I take care of a lot of that because I happen to have that skillset. We were coming out of the pandemic and needed that work to get done. Can I manage a department and handle that much production, like day-to-day doing of housing? We start adding a program, we start, you know, getting all these different things. Go, we go from a short-term issue to a much longer term issue. And so how, where do we dedicate resources to deal with housing? That's not just, hey, talk to a developer. That's, we have them in incentives, we're monitoring incentives, we're running programs. All capable of doing that, but we got to kind of decide, how many people does it take to do that? And then the other thing is kind of the social services. I mean, right now, community relations is an enforcement arm. They provide a lot of information just because people come to them, but they investigate fair housing primarily. And then there's some public accommodation and some employment. I will tell you, the one that's the hardest for us is employment. Because what we're finding is it's not a lot of ma and pa local businesses. It is large employers. Walmart, Target, and taking those cases on, take a lot of staff time and they are very expensive. And I'm not always quite sure if they do what is intended for them. Where fair housing is much more localized for us when we do. Where fair housing is much more localized for us when we do those types of cases. And then ADA, we've kind of taken on the last year or so of looking at it a little differently. Not just as a, you know, when does somebody request a public accommodation issue? But, you know, dealing with the ADA transition plan, getting more education out there, working more on the building community, educating them on public accommodation, those types of things. And I think with the update of the transition plan, there will be some good homework items coming out of that. But when we start to get into homelessness and social service kind of components, we have folks in our team who are doing some of those things, but it's much different than providing those direct services. So kind of understanding where the commission wants that role for the city to be and what those expectations are would be helpful.
That's very much a policy conversation. I mean, we're, we're changing the, the trajectory of the organization.
And I mean, some of this conversation is, it's about our capacity as well. I mean, some of it, we can, we can add positions on our, on our books all day long, but if we can't find people to fill them to do those, those jobs, then, then it, you know, we won't be able to get them done. So some of it is about what can we actually do? And, and maybe community relations is an area where we can look at those things and go, hey, maybe we can't do the employment stuff. We, we're better at the other stuff, let's focus on that with people that we have and expand our capacity in one area.
But the other thing we can do is there's alternatives to the employment stuff. We're, we're kind of the anomaly in terms of taking some of this on as a city.
There's a state commission for equal opportunity employment, which is where somebody can go with these. Same thing that we do where we kind of help shepherd people through landlord tenant act stuff, just informing them. We could inform them where they can go for employment issues. So it's not like you're, you know, we're just not going to talk about it anymore. You just kind of help people get to those resources. In a, looking at community relations and kind of understanding the capacity for that division. I do think when we take on the infill housing, they're a really good spot for that, because they're really aware of some of our community's most challenging aspects of infill housing.
Back to the homeless issue. You know, we, we had a lot of good things come out of the forum back in December. And it just kind of, the end of the year just kind of fell off. And I have had this thought of, I don't know if the city, city would facilitate it or who, but it needs to be done. A homeless task force as such to bring in all these partners we had in December that would meet on a monthly basis and just put it out there. Brainstorm for solutions, offer assistance where they could. Uh, this problem's going to rear its head and how much of it is the city's responsibility, I don't know, but uh, that's who gets blamed for it.
Fair point. I did, I'll, I'll put that down then. That's a policy discussion for view as a governing body, but I understand your point.
Yeah. Uh, another thing is danger structures. We, we hear this all the time and, you know, I wa- I like to s- see what's accomplished. We spend money, I like to see what we bought. And as I drive by South Santa Fe and Prescott, that house there, we've heard, I don't know how many times, still stands. It's like nothing gets done. I was by the house on Pacific and eight, I believe. Did see that they put a fence around it. But who follows up and sees that something gets done?
We do, and I'm happy to provide you, you know, there's a different report the commission wants annually on what has been demolished and things like that. A lot of times we are working through to see if we can't get somebody to take this stuff down themselves before we send somebody else in to do it. Because one, I know we'll probably never see that money back. Two, if they can get it done in an easy, easier way, um, sometimes it gets done in a more timely manner. But it's just trying to kind of work through that process. Um, but I will follow up on that specific address. But we are constantly monitoring properties all the time that we have started agreements with to do those types of things, you know, you've got to. I think one of the biggest challenges isn't it? Is a lot of people don't have a lot of money when we're dealing with some of these things. And so we try to kind of find that balance between things being dangerous and somebody willing to get something taken down. The number of meetings that we end up having with somebody saying, hey, you took all this stuff out of my yard. That was, that was mine. Those are things that were valuable to me is always a challenge. So if we can get them to remove them there themselves, that is ideal.
Well, I guess I perceive the challenge is with your call volume, they go from call to call and never have time to follow up on it.
And the, the volume is uh short of, just short of overwhelming. And then the other thing that you, you very seldom do you have someone with a dangerous structure just acknowledge, yep, I'll get started. It's, that's when the conversation starts about uh options and I'm going to put a plan together and that whole conversation and timeline drags out. Um, but we enter in, we impose deadlines, we enter into agreements and there are consequences. We just are trying to work with them.
Well, I think city managers Greg brought this up. Danger structures are different than typical abatements. Our abatements in every category are up. We are doing more grass and weeds. We are doing more junk and trash than we have. Every year we increase that. But danger structures, we have typically taken in the past, we, you know, we have enough budget, you know, we, we start with eight. We can get all eight to start and then they all end up in different processes, different timelines. They ask for different extensions. There is a lot of handholding to deal with danger structures. And that's where some of those questions become like, are they occupied with somebody? Are they truly dangerous? So when we talk about staffing and where you really need someone who's dedicated more to managing those, going after those, that would be a significant help. These danger structures are, they take a ton of staff.
What made me think of this was the house on ninth and uh, ninth and south, I believe. Uh, you talked about salvage yard permits. Uh, is this essentially looking at Kenny's Junkyard, what, what I call Kenny's Junkyard?
I'm not sure Kenny's Junkyard is in the city limits, but um.
Part of it is.
Yeah, part, uh, maybe some of it, but.
Part of it's.
That's not the only one, there's a handful.
There's others?
Yeah. But yeah, um, on State Street and fine iron and metal for that matter.
Oh, okay. I didn't think of that as a junkyard, that's.
Yeah.
Scrapyard.
Yeah, it all, uh, regulation wise, they all kind of get regulated the same. Anything else? All right. I, I think this department's, it takes me back to my prior point. Lots of ideas, uh, capacity issues we had forced us to prioritize there. Uh, the call volume, the permit volume is as high as it's ever been. Um, financing administration. We talked about agenda management software. Um, and so along with that is citizen notification functionality. I think the website, uh, we're on top of that and, and have an approach. Boards and commissions, I touched earlier about kind of revisiting the boards and commissions and their membership. But then the city clerk's office is more involved in that recruitment, appointment process and attendance tracking. Um, by co- by, by our own uh policy, we have attendance requirements and um, tracking that and holding people accountable, that can be a little difficult. Contract management, that's spread across more than just the finance administration department for sure. But uh, we're looking at workflows, filing and record keeping, scheduling reminders um for expiration, contact, contract provision for renewal, uh, different conditions that things have to be done in a certain timeframe. We, we're looking for kind of a technological way to, to address that. Um, I think we've talked before about budget process refinements. I, I gotta give Debbie credit. We've made, we've, year by year, we're, we're tackling more and more, we are making improvements. Um, so there's the munis functionality aspect of it in terms of the software. There's a government finance officers association, award of excellence that sets forth standards. And, and that's kind of my end goal is to develop a document that it meets that standard, achieves that goal. And then once you've done it, it's kind of uh wrote year after year after that. Um, budget document improvements, we're, we continue to work on the information content and how it's presented. And then uh, next step is kind of the graphical presentation of that. That's probably beyond, that, that's kind of taking it to a publication level beyond just PowerPoints and the documents we might produce in-house. Uh, purchasing pan- policy and manual review, we, we adopted and made improvements there recently. And we've just identified ongoing need for that conversation improvements. Um, purchasing agent and project manager has been something that we've as, as staff have talked about. Um, and those are two different things. Purchasing agent uh helps administer the purchasing policy. Project manager is a challenge across the organization. And I don't know that someone in the finance department really going to be able to manage parks projects and public works projects and what have you. But project management is, is an ongoing challenge for us. It, it, number one, doing it timely. Number two, uh, you know, uh, being effective. So um, that's an item for discussion. Asset management policy updates, we uh are working on that as well, just in terms of uh inventorying and maintaining them. Um, we have policies across the organization that, that we could compile, review and, and make revisions to. Special assessments, um, there's an opportunity there for uh creating a mod- module in a database to automate that a little bit better. We talked about records retention on the development services side, but there's records, uh, copious records in the city clerk's office that uh uh, developing a retention policy. So we know how long we're keeping them and, and what the expectation is. On the water customer accounting side, we're in the middle of water billing software implementation. I'm really encouraged about where we're headed with that and the functionality of that. Um, someone mentioned earlier, I use the analogy of level bill uh payment. That's something that the customer services staff have identified as a functionality they'd like. As well as uh having the website and the software be more customer service, self-service oriented. So that uh, it helps with our workload in terms of answering questions and walking people through it. And they can do it in a, at night and weekends when, when the office isn't open. Along the same lines, phone automation, being able to look up their account information, things like that. Lockbox services, I think we talked about that when we did the financial bidding. But there's an ability to have someone else process uh water bill payments and, and batch them for us and process them and it hits our financial accounts and the volume of that is pretty sizable. So uh, that's an opportunity for, there's a cost that goes with that. But there's an opportunity to gain efficiencies for our staff as a result of it. Um, bill printing and mailing services, um, we, I think there's opportunities for improvements. Their staff thinks there's opportunities for improvement. Um, incentivizing paperless billing and auto pay. Again, if that, that technology is not new, um, with the water billing software, the, the functionalities there. The more that we can get our customers to do that, the more our water customer counting cat staff can kind of keep up with the, the rest of their workload. Um, payment options other than, or you know, electronic payment options, Venmo, that type of thing. Payment plans, uh, so these next couple are policy issues that we would have to bring back to you. But payment plans and leak waivers, we, we have some language codified, we have some past practice. Um, but I think it, it's time to take a look, run that back by the governing body, confirm that you're okay with, with the approach. But um, we, we try to work with customers. If, if it's a one-time leak, um, we have given staff some latitude, but we need to verify that that's authorized by code and that's what you as a governing body want. Um, automa- automated notifications of high usage, that's a technology item that is hel- not only helpful for the customer, but it's a little bit of self-preservation on our part. If we can help someone realize by monitoring, you know, hourly daily usage and alert them rather than wait for their monthly bill to come in and see that it spiked. Uh, it's helping them and, but it's also helping us avoid a customer service issue. Um, improved website functionality and then winter, winter quarter for first time customers. If you, if you recall our billing process, um, once you're an established customer, we'll take your winter quarter and use that to determine your sewage usage on the premise that if you're filling a pool, watering your yard, washing a car, that's, that's seasonal use. But we aren't, we don't have anything in place for that first time customer that doesn't have a winter quarter. You know, logically, uh, you, you need that, but we could just have some across the board residential rate um, that would be in place until they establish their usage. Might, might have some lost revenue there, but from a customer service standpoint, um, it heads off a lot of questions and it, it, I think will be well received from the customer side of things. So.
Are the leak waivers and the automatic notifications a service that's already provided?
Well, the leak waiver is more of a policy that's, that's in place that we need to revisit. The autom- the, the notifications of high usage, I'm not sure that functionality is in place just yet.
Like I, I had a, a leak in our sprinkler system and I called and folks got on thing and, and looked and we thought we had it fixed, but I come, wanted to make sure it's specif- so it's not running high now. And she's, whoa, boy, but you did have it real high.
Right.
Yeah.
We're, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're able to go back and look at that data and tell you on an hour by hour basis, wh- what was going on. With a little bit more technology, it can identify that there was a spike and notify you as a customer at your identified content.
Great. And uh, it's just a little thing we don't, but the uh, I do the electronic payment, but I still get an envelope. I have 25 years of envelopes, once a month. And that costs, you don't, you don't have to keep wasting these envelopes. It's well, it's, everybody gets an envelope or nobody gets an envelope.
I think that would, I think that goes back to the paperless billing. And because paper will go to paperless billing, we're not mailing anything. Um, so I think that's helpful. I will add on to the software implementation. When we did that implementation and signed that contract, it reverberated into, we, we were then required to do an upgrade to the finance system. And we're also going to be going to do an upgrade to the metering system. So all of those systems are kind of gathered together. And in order to get the highest level of, of product, we had to do some other things to do that. So it just reverberates into it. Some of the new functionality will be notification when your bill goes up and, and things like that.
Billing, I can do that myself online? That'll save that envelope then, okay?
Yes.
All right.
We get that call, that question a lot.
Do you have any data on what percentage of people mail in there?
Um, right now it's about 70%, 70%. Don't be surprised. Um, how many actually mail in there or dropping in the box outside?
I've had the auto payment ever since it was available.
Right.
If I didn't have that, none of my bills would.
It's promising as Mike mentioned was the level bill pay. We have not had that functionality over the past. It, it is going to be part of this, this system. Um, just like your Kansas gas or whatever, it'll, it'll be based on your 12-month usage. Um, so I think that's, that's going to be exciting.
I get a weekly email from Evergy and congratulating me if I use less.
Right.
And shows me the, each day a graph.
Those will be decisions we have to make as we go forward, because we obviously have to pay for every one of those notifications. So it'll be a note of, a, a decision point, I think, as do we want to notify Commissioner Longbine that he's doing a great job? Or do we want to notify him when he's not doing a good job? It's like, there's a problem.
Action of a catastrophe is number one. Uh, what is the timeline on the uh new software? Wasn't it June testing and?
August 1st is our, our goal, goal live day with the water customer.
Going to start testing in June?
We're already, we're already done. Two data passes in the testing part to make sure that our data is coming in and being mapped correctly. So we're in that part right now, um, and we'll do several more of those before that time.
As lockbox services, how many are there?
Uh, we estimated there was about six to 7,000 a month that we could utilize.
Service writers, how many?
About one. Pretty much what it is, is the, it's set up with the bank and the bank will, all the mail will go to a post office box. And then the bank actually picks up that, that, those payments and they process it through their computer systems. They send us a report, the money's in our bank, we get a report ties back to our software system to show it's paid. It's just like it. If you don't understand it, every time you mail a payment to a post office box, it's probably a lockbox. And it's probably a bank or a, yes.
That's just totally out.
That's a, yeah, that's outsourced even more.
Yeah, no. One of the. Yeah, the envelope thing, that.
Yeah, that's, that's been an, we could choose not to provide it at all. But then you have those that do. Maybe we could just have them call us and send them a 12 or something, I don't know. Some alternative.
I look forward to the the paperless.
I have one question since we're, on the boards and commissions, the recruitment and appointment process we talked about, do we have a policy or anything that when somebody sends in a form for of interest, does it stay there forever? Because I know somebody got appointed one time and they said, well, I sent that in four years ago.
They're supposed to age out of the system.
And what is that? Okay, because this had been longer than that and it could have just been one of those that got missed. They were just kind of shocked that they had gotten notified they'd been selected.
Well, and then where I thought you were headed with it is the other thing that came up recently was residence. We've had people apply from significant distance away and technically we don't have a policy on that either.
Has the attendance policy ever been actually enforced?
And the way it's set up, the the mayor is supposed to send a letter and kind of put together an action plan or they're supposed to give the person the opportunity to kind of correct their attendance and then if it continues, they can be removed from the board. So it's tracking that board by board, meeting by meeting, it can be difficult. And then getting that communication to be productive can be difficult.
Another software package.
How would the issue of residency be brought to us? Because I mean, that's, I mean, it seems like kind of low lying truth to use that term, but but that's something we could fix quickly.
Right. We have a boards and commissions policy and so that will be an amendment to it. There's probably more extensive overhauling that we can do, but we could tackle that first and get it out of the way.
Garden City was a little far away.
One of our boards. Do we have any other questions on this? If not.
Yeah, I think we're at a break point. I don't know.
Well, we had 11:45 public questions.
The, you didn't, we did have a citizen come by and drop off a written communication. He wanted to be sure that you received and I distributed that at the last break. And I do think, I don't know that it's worth it to try to start into fire. So you want to take the break and take lunch. And then we are supposed to be out at the airport at 1:00. So I've got a vehicle and can take four people, if you're wanting to sit three across. You know, head out there as a group.
Who's driving that other commissioner?
I mean, I can drive my own car.
Yeah, if if we can make arrangements over lunch for the remainder. Actually, if anybody's wanting to get in the third group, I could probably get everybody.
Excuse the state of my vehicle.
I just had this vision that we would take the green bus.
The green bus?
Cause I don't know where.
That that's a whole nother organization. It's a little bit more coordination.
One vision, not the airport terminal?
Yes, in fact, I will verify the exact location. I have that and I'll get it for you.
I can very easily.
I was going to start with that if you're ready to talk logistics a little bit. So the agenda on Monday is fairly light, but one thing that you might have noticed is Schneider Electric was going to be a study session. We put them on as an action item. It got bumped three times. This might be the fourth time we've scheduled them and so that's an item on the on your Monday agenda that might run a little bit longer, but I still think it's relatively short. If you're willing to roll over some of our departments from today to then, that might help ease the pressure a little bit.
And I just, I just need to do it Monday is Friday.
Yeah, you'd rather run late Monday night than Friday. So if that's the case, my suggestion would be that the last three on the schedule, which would be police, public works and utilities, we take up on Monday. But if if that's the case, I want to let them know now rather than.
So what does that leave us fired? What's that leave us fired?
That leaves us fire, human, human resources, court, parks and rec.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Okay with that? Started one.
No.
Oh, after.
After the meeting.
Oh, okay. I thought he was going to place of the study session.
Do it at the meeting Monday.
Veterans Memorial Study Session, then Schneider Electric was going to be a study session as an agenda item and then we could tack this on to Monday. Apologies to those departments in the room and not that got bombed. And Sean, if you could let CJ and Martha know, please. Okay. All right. So the next one we had in the lineup was the fire department and you're going to see that I think chief wants to double the size of his department before we're done staffing wise. There's a lot of, a lot of staffing in here. We talked about some of the equipment scheduling and the planning they've done there. Got some more equipment to talk to you about and we'll just kind of dive in. So I do want to acknowledge that we had a deputy chief position tasked Chief Snyder with assessing the organization and the need. And he consolidated emergency services and the deputy into a position. So had a net savings there. He's proposing a logistics chief at the battalion chief level. Their responsibility is being facilities, apparatus and information technology. The current approach is all those type of responsibilities get farmed out to the battalion chiefs and amongst their other responsibilities. You end up with a battalion chief that's also supposed to be taking care of buildings, maintenance and repair, that type of thing. Then also public relations position, that's a position we used to have. We phased out, I don't even know how many years ago. Training position, we do have an EMS, have a training chief, but focusing on EMS training. And then also talking about getting to four people per, four staff per apparatus. And we've had conversations in the department for quite some time about whether adding staff could offset forced overtime and whether that could be a break even proposition or I don't want to be overly optimistic and say that it could save money. I would say that I have as much confidence in Chief Snyder as we've had in a while to be able to actually assess that in coordination with possibly Scott trying to make that assessment. We've been reluctant to pull the trigger because we didn't have metrics, we didn't have benchmarking, we didn't have a way to actually, number one, get a good sense of how we thought we'd perform and number two, have some accountability on the backside.
Isn't that where we used to be?
I'm sorry?
I thought at one time we were four and then for staffing a budget cuts, whatever reason.
And it's actually staff up an ambulance, I believe.
There was a, it was a combination. The last reduction was due to medical four being implemented. Instead of staffing that with additional people, we actually removed two more people per shift to staff that. So now we have three on each apparatus. Which is not recognized to be safe by NFPA. There's, there's a multitude, NFPA, IFC, IAFF, ICMA have all recommended four. And and there's the big difference is somebody to flow water, somebody to come save you. Where I don't have that now. It's, it's a target. It's optimal. It provides the safest for our people. Because if not, the first engine or whomever gets there has three people. So you have two going in. Can't flow water and save people at the same time. And sometimes they have to happen simultaneously.
That was a point I was going to pause anyway. Other point you want to make as relates to those staffing items?
So continuity of operations, system integrations, I mean, everything that we have going on and seeing the way forward and the future for us. Our communications is broken only due to the fact that people that handle certain responsibilities aren't in the station for two days. And then they come back, they've got to catch up on their shift people. How are they going to handle the facilities aspects? How are they going to handle the CT? And CT and Scott and I have spoken about this on getting us back to this team concept between with our organizations. Because it can't be me telling Scott or Scott telling us, we have agreed that we need to work together. I can't have somebody every three days and oh, by the way, he's on shift. And he also handles the communication center. Somebody in the logistics position handles those aspects throughout the week, on the weekends when needed. When we have a CT issue, we have, we're going to have a process. We don't have that right. So we do have a lack of accountability in that sense. We do our best with it as we, as everybody does. But is it optimal? Absolutely not. And we need to have it optimal. We need to have optimal dispatch procedures and the systems in place there as well as our folks and the communication process and resources to fix a problem now as we're 24/7/365.
Hold on your hat. We're not done talking stick fire staffing yet. So on the, I put this in the mechanic category. It might be a little bit broader than the true responsibilities of the mechanic in the fire department. But we've talked about the apparatus replacement schedule. I mentioned a little bit in passing that for budget reasons, I believe, we transitioned from, we transitioned from a Quint to an engine. I'd like to transition back to a Quint. And I think, I don't know that that's in the numbers that your department prepared. We'll have to check that.
It wasn't. It was based what we have right now.
Right.
But the difference is overall cost about $300,000 from an engine to a Quint.
Ambulance replacement schedule, we, I feel like we have a creative approach as it stands. You may recall that the box gets replaced and the chassis gets retained and and the conversation is just that we can't do that forever. We're going to have to be mindful of that. We do have a relationship with the county where they fund that equipment. And you're going to see later discussion of adding an ambulance. Between those two, those are costs that need to have a conversation with the county about. Forewarn them that adding an ambulance is six staff people and approximately a half a million dollars in personnel expense, not counting the equipment. SCBA, self-contained breathing apparatus compressors are the equipment to fill them and need replacement, also need them deployed across the stations, I believe. And then backup generators. We have some backup generators at the stations, but need to maintain them and and keep them in good working order. On the suppression side, you're going to see SCBA again. That's the actual units themselves replacing those and you know, from a budget exercise, the fire department came in and said, I don't even remember how many, but I just remember being startled by the number and the cost and and says, if we need them now. And my reaction is, why are we just talking about this now? It's that whole replacement schedule conversation again. And if we, it it probably makes sense that we're buying those in bulk. We're not cycling through different makes and models and have a diverse distribution of them. But we just need to plan better and have it accounted for. We have a training tower that requires maintenance and a burn room and we've done that on occasion. But then the department's also talking about replacing the training tower or upgrading the training tower. We've been having conversations about station four and its relocation. You've seen some of those initial cost estimates. And then in the conversation is if and when there's going to be a station five, depending on our our growth. That's something that's probably further out in the capital improvement planning. Not something that we would budget through an annual operating budget, but could represent, you know, a long-term debt funded expenditure.
Where was the number five go?
Haven't figured that out yet. Kind of depends on where the growth's at and the response times. Have confirmed the appropriateness of station four in light of the growth going on to the east. I think the concerns are to the west, the industrial area. And then some of these conversations about housing have brought some property to the southwest in the conversation that wasn't necessarily in our comprehensive plan and could create some response time issues. I'll pause again and let you add commentary.
Should I add what I mentioned to you or?
I don't know. I don't remember what that is, but go ahead. Oh, yeah.
So, thank you. You know, I sometimes shy away from these, but you know, in just my forward thinking, I looked at Southwest and I looked at what's around and what possible opportunities are in place. And just for whatever reason, it came to my thought that we have an airport firehouse. We have a certain index that we have to maintain. So there is a facility. I don't know all the ins and outs of the legalities of who owns it and how that all works, honestly. But I think it would be an opportunity for us to at least look at and open some dialogue now and not wait for a couple of years or three years. So that once we figure this out and understand where we are going, that we have something that works that we can then formalize. I have not spoken to Tim about this, but I have spoken to him saying, I'd love to meet with him again and and talk and and kind of get his idea. I mean, he's the guy who knows a lot of people and has done so much for Salina from everything I've heard about him. I think that would be a good groundbreaking discussion. I think it provides an opportunity for a partial of what we would need for a firehouse. We'd probably have to put onto that, add on. And we'd have to, and then we're staff it. You know, so when you talk staffing over, there's yes, I'm asking and looking at the staffing needs for the Salina Fire Department, not only now, but moving forward. You know, there, it's going to be a need. I see with all the commercial buildings down there in that area and also the housing growth in that area that's being spoken of. I think this is an opportunity for us to at least explore and kind of go from there.
Does the airport have its own fire department?
Yeah, they call it an ARF station, but yeah, they have some dedicated people there. I think it corresponds with their operations. It's not necessarily 24/7, but.
Based on our index.
Are you looking at city absorbing that or merging them?
I'm sure Tim's looking at the city absorbing that, but that would be part of the conversation is and how we could balance that both in terms of their need and what service has to be provided there and then our ability to respond outside of their service area. You know, I hate to resort to consultants all the time, but when we start talking about response times and scheduling and that may be a brush touch up of a prior response study that we've done.
Yeah, I can see the the need for location wise.
The station one is the only station that's west of Santa Fe and that's just by a block. But I don't think, there's, there's nothing.
I don't know Belmont.
Station three is your first responding.
Belmont.
I guess technically that's west of Santa Fe.
Okay, on the fire prevention side, that's the fire marshal's office. And I mentioned earlier that we used to have a public educator position there. And then the other point of conversation was just transitioning them to a shift schedule like the firefighters rather than an eight to five schedule. They they keep office hours and and Troy Long primarily and the other staff are involved with plan review, development review team that are on a more of a eight to five Monday through Friday schedule. EMS, you know, that's been a conversation for quite some time. Continued funding for the paramedic training program. We're, you know, pretty supportive of those operations and recruitment and retention is a big deal across the organization. Staff training position been thrown in the conversation. Touched on the the replacement cycle for the medic units, the chassis, boxes, equipment and deciding the timing of new purchases versus rebuilds. Providing for continuing education, EMS and fire staff and then staffing an additional ambulance. The, we've talked a lot about transfers and the load that that creates and the call volumes going up. In 54% in the last year?
54% since the inception of medic four.
You know, you know, being meeting in meetings at the hospital, I hear the two sides of that argument and that's usually my, my, my city hat prevailed, but to hear the nurses and some of the staff and say, well, I don't know why EMS, we're on camera, is complaining. They're making millions of dollars off of us. I'm saying, well, but that's their mindset. Kind of like, why would you guys want to threaten to get rid of a cash cow here? I said, yeah, but you know, we need staff to man those ambulances. And you send one to Kansas City, that's, that's a unit that you don't have available here in town. I said, you know, I said, you know, in the old days hospitals staffed their own ambulances. I said, maybe the hospital should, you know, stand up. If not physically operate the ambulance, you know, pay the equivalent of what it would be to create a fifth ambulance if we're doing that much transfer.
Well, and I want, I want to be clear, transfers is part of it. That statistic number is call volume with an aging population and kind of the demographic that part of what we struggle with is you really can't triage those calls very well and deny and just decide you're not going. And then you've got people that the emergency rooms, their, their medical provider of first resort, simultaneously last resort. But as it relates to the hospital, now I can see why they would think that's a cash cow, but maybe we, maybe we need to show our math and, you know, at $500,000 per ambulance of personnel expense alone. at $500,000 per ambulance of personnel expense alone, or in the two and a half, three million dollar range compared to the revenue that comes in, in about the same range.
And I guess most of the transfers are people who are sick enough that you need, or you're better equipped if you have a train. I mean, the true paramedics EMS on the highway, you don't want to send a lesser trained crew. Cause I'd asked before, could we have a lower level transport? But then you look at who you're transporting and you say, nah, nah.
There's, there's a variety of reasons for the transports. Some, people that are transported are in different levels of condition. Some are urgent, some are because of lack of space at the hospital. And it's not only the time for the transport when you look at that, because let's say they go to Kansas City. If they go at 11 o'clock at night, they're staying in Kansas City until the morning and driving back. So they're not driving back at four o'clock in the morning and getting hurt or injured in an unnecessary accident. So we do not then have the medic unit here to provide service to the folks that are in, in Salina and Saline County at that given time. And there's no rhyme nor reason. We've, we do have a matrix that we use to, you say go or no go based on a lot of different factors, whether it's weather, whether it's time of day, whether it's call volume for the day, for the actual day, not data for all that, but for the actual day. So, and, and the hospital's been pretty good, with working with us, but it's still, when you add that in and look at the hour, an hour and four minutes is our typical call time for a normal run. But when you factor in the call time for a transport, that is the equivalent sometimes of four, five, six additional runs in a day period. So we have to do that. And we are working with CPI and Scott's folks and a group of folks from around the city to look at this from, from the 30,000 foot view to see what we can come up with, um, to make more sense overall.
And I'm, I'm not going to say the problem's solved, but I, one of the byproducts of COVID was the transfers weren't an option. And I think that changed the, the perspective a little bit. And, and I do think there's better dialogue between staff and the hospital about, kind of applying some, some criteria of timing and we can't take all the transfer requests. And so that's an improvement, but the volume, it just continues to grow.
Has it been looked at to privatize some of these transfers?
The, we've had conversations about that. Back to one of Trent's prior points, some of the conversations I was in, you know, it was complimentary in the hospital's part, but their response was there's a notable service difference. And we generally prefer Salina EMS to make the transfer. And then some of them, their condition is such that we're advanced like.
My other question is a lot of transfers, do they really require a fast one ambulance?
A fair question.
A lot of them, yeah. I mean, uh, they really do. I mean, you know, we're lucky because, you know, I take for granted Salina Fire Department because there's no patient they can't handle. I mean, the only ones they don't handle, the ones who need to be airlifted, literally where 45 minutes will make a difference.
Do we still have air service here?
They're not based here anymore. They can get here, but we're going to Wichita. We, we all know it's faster by ground. But by the time you make that initial phone call and the patient arriving in Wichita, it's usually faster through Salina Fire.
So it's back to your question of private providers. They haven't been all that reliable, just in terms of their availability to provide service and stay in business. And then there seems to be a preference for our service.
And I think there's only one in, one company in town. And the staffing is irregular. And, and they can't take a real sick person.
So continues to be a challenge. Um, and I think it, it's a little bit better, at least in terms of a, how much of a workload it's creating, but it's still a problem we need to address. Like, yes, I pulled the, um, the apparatus slide and put them at the beginning of the presentation, but, kind of repeating myself, we've identified the, the equipment that's in inventory and shown you that number. Transitioning from a, an engine to a Quint is an added cost. If there's any changes in the fleet, that's an added cost. We, in the capital improvement inventory, we're starting to dial into other items. SCBA is the one that has kind of come out of the conversation, but I do think there's, fire department is pretty equipment intensive and, and there's a lot of opportunity to, address some of those other items. It's just going to take some time to inventory them all and put schedules together and try to get that done.
Just for the benefit of somebody watching this, the Quint is the equivalent of what kids grow up calling a hook and ladder?
No.
No. Okay. So much for the assumption. I'm sorry.
We have the tractor component. So we have, our aerial devices are straight, straight pieces. One is mounted, the other is not. The Quint is basically capable of, uh, when it comes to ISO and NFPA, it is considered an aerial device as long as the ladder has a minimum reach of 75 feet. It also can pump and the required pump discharge, I believe is 1,250 gallons per minute. And where our engines can do that, and now our ladder, our ladder one, also aerial device, has a little longer reach, but also is capability, capable of pumping. So those are things that, you know, when I look at these costs and look at some of the things that I, I believe, provided the staffing levels get to where they should be, we can go to a true ladder that doesn't need a pump. That's extra wear and extra cost. Where our engines, when they're, we also can modify the way our engines are set up, to reduce the cost from what we have now, what we call the cross mount engines, where you see right behind the cabs where they can cross over there and it's a control panel up in the middle. Not an absolute necessity. It can shorten the apparatus. It can make it a little better maneuverability. It can reduce the cost and it can be more effective for us. So a number of things I've looked at, not only specifically, but the what ifs and seeing how we can best do this and be cost effective and responsible at the same time. So it's, I don't look at apples to apples all the time because really if you go apples to oranges and figure out what the end game is and what the outcome is, what's the best outcome? So I've looked at it from multiple different ways and I continue to do so. So it's the best, best way I can tell you how that works. The hook and ladders, tiller ladders, and although I think it'd be phenomenal here because they can really move in places. And I had considered that maybe a tiller ladder at some point because of the maneuverability, but you know, who knows? Something, it's more than my thoughts I get with a group of, of fire department folks, not only here, but I talk to friends around the country and pick their brains as well. I don't know everything and don't claim to, so.
Well, I know a lot more than I did five minutes ago. Thank you.
Sorry if I'm using the time up inappropriately.
Nope. What you, you straightened me out as far as the differences. Thank you.
Well, why are we talking about trucks? I, I, I see it and I hear it all the time. A simple medical call, you got a full engine response. Why don't we utilize squad trucks here? So for your basic MAVs and medical calls.
So the, the issue there is, so the way our EMS system is set up, it's not set up for that. First of all, that's, that's the basic answer. When you look at the engines going on calls, it's typically because of the level of the call, that it's anticipated that they're going to be needed because of the, uh, the CPR methods that we use here. And I will tell you that Salina Fire and EMS, our EMS treatment and what we can provide is probably if not the top, it's darn close to within the whole state. These guys that get out are phenomenal.
Did you take delivery on their machines?
We have them and unfortunately that, that those machines are in, the training got pushed off due to the unfortunate and untimely death of Chief Gerson. It has been rescheduled because we had, uh, the vendor coming in to do the training. It's now at the end of this month. And so that will occur. It's the last week of the month. So that training will occur and then it'll be implemented. So can't implement until we get the training and we want to make sure we're doing it right. We do basically, it's like pit crew CPR. And it's phenomenal. Our save rate is well above the national average. I forget return to spont, return to spontaneous cardiac, whatever. But yeah, we're, we're darn good at it. And, uh, so when you have the engine, you have to maintain the engine for the fire component. But if you have to send extra bodies, that's what we have. If we send them on another truck and they either get done or go be, go, go available, that vehicle won't be able to respond to the fire in the proper equipment. This is kind of a standard first responder.
So it's a staffing issue that you can't send guys on the squad truck and then.
Right.
Have them run back to get the.
Right. And we also, I mean, we, as it is, we cross staff our rescue and ladder right now. Where depending on the call, depends on which apparatus they get on. So I don't have a dedicated ladder crew. They're ladder crew or rescue one crew. So these are the things that, you know, fortunately, when I, when I got here, Mike has allowed me to say, hey, look, this is what I think. He said, I want to know where we're at. And, you know, it, I've worked through it. Jacob and I have spoken about it and, um, I understand, you know, there's always financial, lines of tag attached to these things, but also I have to present you everything as I see it. And we do the best we can and provide the best service we can.
So I, I guess I kind of look at the, the wear and tear component of the engine for, you know, to go for lifting assistance.
Well, a lift assist, you're going to get an engine response at, at reduced speed, just driving normal. So there's wear and tear all the time. I, I look at wear and tear. When you're driving an apparatus at an emergency response, you're going to get more wear and tear, but they're also made for that to a point. When you look at, when I've looked at the overall mileage of our engines, the age of our apparatus, Casey's been resorted to eBay for parts. They've had to fabricate, fabricate radiators. I used to say radiators until Mike, who all corrected me. Their companies have had to fabricate them because we cannot get them from the manufacturer. So these are the things that we're fighting on a daily basis. So understand, we have never had a situation occur where we have had a fire response necessity that we were unable to send the appropriate amount of people. However, if, and if a piece of equipment breaks down, there is a time where we're going to be short because we've got to get the other one in place. If it hits the fan during that time, so the reliability becomes a huge factor.
Yeah, but I, I think the fact that we're, are equivalent to the age that it is, we're not wearing it out by driving it over the road. It's, or we're keeping it in our inventory till it just doesn't function anymore.
Although when a person dials 911, you know, at that moment in their life, they don't care if the city has to pay a little more. They want that truck. I tried to save the fire department some money one night. There was a smoke, it was electrical burning. We couldn't find it. And I called them and I said, you know, you don't really need to send, we're out of potential embarrassment. You don't need to send the, I think one truck at door. No, Doc, we don't roll that way. We all come or nobody comes.
Mr. Davis's house is on fire.
Well, now, you know, go across the street and get mixed. So.
But we do get that question through the city manager's office and otherwise. Why, why do you send somebody? And my bad answer is, I'd rather have more equipment and more people than we need than send a short response and.
Yeah, I just, I, I look at the mechanical side of it, but the, I know a squad truck probably gets a lot of bear gas mileage in a engine.
The engine only goes out of pure necessity on what the, uh, the dispatch requires. Because we do have the medical officer now that will go on things. We've instituted a lot of changes this year with our dispatch protocols and they're going to be coming online with the new systems, with station alerting to where there's automatic dispatch levels now are going to be and have been identified for the medical officers as well as the battalion chiefs. We've changed not everything around, but we've just fortified everything.
Can you give us an update on the alert system?
Yes. Uh, the components have been ordered. Uh, we did run into a, I guess you'd call it a CT issue at station three, I think it was Scott. And I quite honestly didn't understand the terminology. I don't know if it had to do with a rack, if that's a piece of a shelving unit or something. We identified that we needed more rack space, uh, and we've been working with CT to fix that. Communication center found one of the, one of the pieces that we needed for that, but we're moving along rather well right now. It's not installed, has, the work hasn't started yet, but we're getting there. It's getting pretty close.
Anything else fire related?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Recruitment. Many of your bigger departments. I don't know how we're doing with recruitment.
Till recently, it hasn't been a problem, but until recently, it hasn't been a problem.
Well, there was a day where they would have a recruit, recruitment event here and people would be lined up to out the door. And, uh, a lot of your bigger departments, we still require CPAC and EMS, correct? I know Wichita and Topeka are doing all that. Give me a warm body.
Train them up.
With a driver's license and they're doing the training in-house. Are we going to be moving toward that someday?
You know, I've, I've thought about it, but I'll be honest with you with the other things on our plates. That is not a top priority for me at this point. Now, I've, I've had some other thoughts on different ways to look at it. Now we do recruit. We go out to Hutch Community College. We've been down right here in town to K Dub. We've been at Polytech. I mean, Drew goes out and meets with these folks. We, we, you know, go down and do events where the football players all just went through what would be comparable maybe to the CPAC. So, and we're down at Hutch all the time in support of them with, sometimes with our apparatus, during training events, open houses. I've actually spoken at some of their open houses for new folks for the following year, seniors and juniors that come in to look at that program. So we are involved. We're also both on their fire board and EMS boards down there for the college. Shane's on the EMS board and I'm on the fire board for Hutch Community College. So we maintain a presence there. I'm very well ingratiated in with Kate, Kansas Wesleyan. I meet with the sports teams, I meet with the coaches. You know, we're trying to do everything we can, you know, as soon as we got done our pay study, Wichita immediately increased their, their pay across the board. These are some of the issues that still will haunt us, but we're a lot closer. And I said that we had a, a Kansas State Fire Chiefs meeting that I attended and I asked some questions about the pay and this and that. We're not, we're, we're pretty, pretty good. So that was a fortunate thing for us or we'd probably been really hurt. But we don't get the number of applicants that probably historically we had gotten the last time. We, we got eight. We've had to open it back up because with recent, things that have happened, uh, there's two more positions I wasn't planning on. And, you know, so.
You know, whether it's fire or police, it's a function of assessing, can we fill the positions? How are we faring? And then we adapt the best we can.
Yeah. I mean, we've really done, while the numbers have been smaller, I mean, we still have been effective at getting recruits in. So if we, I guess we haven't, we're not really to the point where we've had an issue recruiting in the way that we have. I mean, with the requirements that we have online, if it gets to that point, we have to adjust it. We could, but it's, it's so far, we've been successful filling those roles. I mean, we're not down, we're down, what, two, three right now, but only, I mean, um, it's, we haven't been down 10 or 15 like we are in other, in other departments.
My concern is looking on down the road with these larger departments, including CPAC and everything in their academies. Why would a kid out of high school go pay to go to college? When he can go sign on and get paid to sit in class at Wichita Fire?
Well, it, it's a fair question. At the point that we're, we're not able to be successful, we'll have to.
I'm just looking in the future down the road.
Biggest concern is this is, there's actually a couple, but the, the biggest concern is if you bring someone on, and I will tell you that compared to 30 years, 31 years ago, when I started, actually 33, because I had my EMT and it's been most of medic school at that point. The whole world of emergency services, medical training is staggering now. It is complex. It is not a very simple thing to do. And what you wind up with is people not passing that component. And it takes a few months of every day, Monday through Friday, or whatever the schedule may be. And then if they don't pass the national registry test, now what have you done for two months? And also now you don't have a staff to train them every Monday through Friday. Cause my training chief right now, my only training officer has to train the whole department in everything and it doesn't have time for. And it doesn't have time for an academy. We have to hire, hire people, our own people to do an academy.
Right.
That's why we try to get the EMT part. The firefighter part's the easier part. I like smart firefighters, but I think you need to really EMS wise, it's, it requires more of a dedication, I'll say.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of guys that want to get into fire service, not the EMS.
And I know folks that want to get into EMS and not the fire too, but right now I don't have those options. Have I thought about them? Absolutely.
That's been a perennial conversation for quite a while. Okay, what else? Thanks, Chief.
Thank, thank you all. Sorry Scott, I moved your mic again.
On the human resources side, I think this might be, the, the department might be as big of an example of any of goals outrunning capacity. On a regular basis, they're trying to get payroll out and do process evals and those type of things. And we've got a lot of vision here, but it may take some outside resources or may take some time. The first two items, employee onboarding and policy management software. Sean Hennessy and Natalie have been working on compliance bridge, which is a new software that we're bringing online to try to make progress in both of those categories. Employee development is a, is a goal and a topic. We've got some programming, but really difficult to do anything all that robust. Employee benefits review and implementation, you know, as part of the pay plan, salary study. We identified this was a component of that. So Natalie's been working on surveying employees and department heads. We've identified kind of the, the bigger topics and should be coming back to you with some policy decisions. Everything from shift differential pay to on-call pay to, you know, some of the things that frankly, we budget kind of drove some of those decisions previously and, and their benefits that, that would help with retention, most likely. Software technical support, it's surprising to me how much programming Natalie does behind the scenes on, on her payroll software. For lack of support from the vendor. I don't know if it's realistic to, to pay outside resources to help, but that might help in terms of some capacity. Wellness programs, we've dabbled in that previously and Natalie can speak to it more specifically than I can. But we've tried different things with mixed results in terms of participation. If we can find something effective, I think it helps employee morale in general, they show them support. And then being self-insured, hopefully it pays dividends in the long run there too. Job applicant software, we have a database that was custom built for us. 20 years, yeah. The, the, there's opportunities, it, it's clunky and there's opportunities to be more efficient, show better with the applicants themselves and process them better. Evaluation software is something that we've talked about quite a bit. There, there's efficiencies that could be gained there, both from supervisors conducting the evaluation as well as HR processing them. And then personnel manual review and revision. And I'll just stop at that slide per minute and pause and give you enough train away in Natalie before we move on.
Just in terms of human resource staff, to give you a little background. Back in 2006, early 2007, I had one additional staff member. We made some changes there. We didn't refill that position. And we haven't refilled it up to this time. Last year during the budget, you did approve my department for an additional person and I, I greatly appreciate that. I have a draft position description that hopefully as soon as next week, we'll be able to launch and try to get someone in to really focus on recruitment, hiring and all things coordination. Just to be more proactive and focus on marketing that we haven't had. We just haven't had that presence or someone dedicated fully to that. During the last few years, I feel like we've made a lot of progress. But they're more of the foundational bricks to allow us to do more. We transitioned to our new software. Human resources didn't go live until 2020. We're on the same software that ties UNIS with the financials. And since that time, it's allowed us to, to build and to do some other things. But we haven't, as you mentioned, with the, the software capacity, we haven't fully reached the capacity there of what I think we can do with that software. So we're on the cusp between that, time and attendance, new pay plan. There are some good things on the horizon, but we just needed that foundation underneath us to be able to, to build upon and move forward.
Supervisor training is something that Natalie's done in the past. And it again is, is limited in terms of time and capacity and, and topic. I think individually in different departments, there, the departments could be doing supervisor training. Police as an example, sergeants and captains that is department specific. But then we can also be doing supervising training across the organization. It certainly, if we're going to try to grow from within and, you know, promote existing employees into supervisory positions. And we really need some resources for them to, to be prepared for that. And as much as we want to customize, it may mean that we really need to go out and find some packaged curriculum and videos and, and overarching information. And then allow us to focus more on the customs line of specific things that we address. There, again, there, there's things that for one to spend the money on, we might be able to bring in some outside resources. The affirmative action code review, you may have seen kind of across the board. Salinas policies, personnel processes are, are very due process oriented and, and cumbersome. With respect to this, we have affirmative action provisions in our hiring practices in terms of everything from how we notice up to dual reviews of applicants. And when we're trying to move fast and, and in response to, you know, a tight labor market, our process is much slower. So one of the things we talked about is if we have multiple positions, we, we have a field of candidates that isn't so specific as maybe a department head. And we might be able to take a, have more latitude in terms of proceeding through hires quickly, knowing that veterans preference and affirmative action reviews can still be addressed with that broader candidate pool. Background checks and just that whole hiring process for seasonal hire in youth sports is daunting in terms of what it means for human resources. And so the process itself, if we could find some improvements there would help. But then we also have an obligation in terms of the background checks. And so we're doing a lot of due diligence, very manually, very Salinas specific. I mean, we have staff checking court records. We're looking for a way to be, to not necessarily automate that, but bring in outside resources. And then we recognize, haven't talked to Big Brothers, Big Sisters, haven't talked to the Y. But there's other organizations kind of doing the same thing that we are. And if there was a unified approach and service provider, there may be efficiencies for all of us. And then referee scheduling, that's through the parks department. But Natalie's familiar with some, some opportunities and organizations that take that on. And it might help, they actually take responsibility for the referees and they treat them as their employees and provide contract services for us. We could do that, if it's workable, that takes a lot off of HR's plate potentially. Still gotta be functional in terms of the end product that we put out from the Parks and Rec Department. And then Natalie had identified some outsourcing opportunities, the things that we currently do that maybe we can find others to do for higher motor carry regulatory compliance. Recruiting, we've, we've engaged a recruitment consultant to try to help fill the deputy utilities director position as an example. Kind of a targeted marketing and a, and a hire that we've not had luck with. Processing 1095s and W2s. And then we mentioned the supervisor training, if we could bring in outside resources. I'll stop there and give you an opportunity, Natalie.
Really the only other thing that I guess might be notable when I mentioned about when we had our last, our fifth person in my department. That was also a time where our, both our new hires as well as the number of employees leaving the city on a full-time or classified part-time basis was about a third of what we had now. We're just in a different market. I don't know that it's going to change anytime soon. But yeah, we, we hire three times as many of our full-time employees as what we used to. And turnover in some areas is about the equivalent to three times what it used to be. So we're trying to rethink and to work with our departments to come up with different ways to, to be doing things. But that's, I think that's just going to be our new norm.
Do we do background checks on all employees at the same level or is it?
Not same. Tell you exactly which ones get the exact level of background. But we do run background checks for everyone. The, the police department will handle some of their own, so they take that burden off. They've also worked with fire to do some of the additional background scrutiny that has to happen for some of those public safety positions, but we do screen them. We also screen all the coach, the volunteer coaches too. So that's a lot of backgrounds that we, that we process. And then as well as if they don't meet our standards that are published, we go through a denial and gets to be involved in those appeals when we get to hear why people think they shouldn't be denied an opportunity. So that's even on the volunteer side. They do.
And we, a couple of years ago, kind of formalized the standards. And there was a National Parks and Rec Association guidance that was really helpful in terms of certain offenses that you find in people's background and how long that disqualifies them for. And it, it helps provide some structure to those conversations and those reviews.
So your basic background checks are conducted in your office?
Yes, depending upon the positions we, we run and we work through the company. So we run, and I'm going to give an example for some of them that we do accurate background checks. So those are like a national database search. We also have the ability to check court records and those are considered open record.
Check for what?
Open like
Local court record.
Open records like current or, and local like Salina and Saline County Court. Because sometimes what we find, and any employer could do this, but there could be a number of pending things. Now we have to be very careful how we handle those, but it does give us the opportunity to ask questions and to delve into some of those issues that aren't going to show up on some of those national backgrounds. So it's like a two-tiered process.
So what's the number one typical black, red flag?
Gosh. I mean, felonies are always going to get additional scrutiny. And it's going to depend on, on what exactly we're dealing with.
One of the biggest issues is their ability to drive. If they, if they can get a driver's license or not, I mean, that's something that turns people away. Yeah, I mean.
Even though those are violations of the law, we almost have to look at those a little bit differently from administrative standpoint. Because if we're trying to hire someone that needs to be able to drive our equipment, we do have a formalized driver policy within our personnel manual. And then we have to assess whether or not they meet the ability to drive and it's
So if someone has a bad driving record, is that a red flag?
It will be a red flag and then depending upon what lines of their policy, it's how long these infractions, how long ago they.
Or current employees, if you have, if you have a license, but you have traffic infractions, you, you're supposed to self-report that. It can impact your ability to drive.
I know my son had a infraction from when he was in college. That hung with him for a long time.
Well, on a broader basis, the whole felony question is a, an equity and, and HR question of, you know, a lot of, in a lot of instances, it's an automatic disqualifier, but felonies are so, convictions are so prevalent now that there's conversation about whether it should be looked at differently.
And we, I mean, we really have started to, to look at, at some of those things, not necessarily felonies, but some other charges that may be and, and try and say, okay, is there a way that we can make this work? You know, depending on the, the position they're in, trying to be more lenient, I guess, than what we've been in the past, just because we're trying to find, you know, people. But it really, most of those come back to the ability to drive. It, it feels like even the ones where we thought, okay, this is, this is an offense that we could maybe, you know, overlook. The driving record has, has turned a lot of people away.
Now, is that only for jobs that involve?
Required driving, right.
Okay.
What about drug screening?
We do post offer pre-employment drug screens.
Are there profiles available that identify the employee who's likely to stay? I know we always, you know, interview the people who are leaving to find out why they're leaving. But do we ever look at what's working? In other words, what, what's common among these employees who've been here 10, 12, 15 years?
Yeah, we have not launched an assessment. The last thing that we would have done, and it's been several years ago, we did an employee satisfaction survey to try to look at some of the, the items that the research says will show signs of engagement and more success within employees. We, we did that, it's been several years ago. One of the downsides that we did, because there was a lot of apprehension on disclosing. The, the employees had a lot of apprehension on disclosing exactly where they were at, especially if they were in a really small department. They didn't want to be able to be identified. So one of the things, the downsides to the data we collected was we lumped a lot of the smaller departments together. And then our data wasn't very helpful because it was very vague or we had to make assumptions across multiple areas. And that, that might be something that we want to take a look at. One of the things we've recently talked about with employees in some of the areas that have been harder to recruit that are from outside the area is tapping into their opinions and their experiences now that they've been with the city a year or two years or three years to say, you know, what are some of the, the good things, both about our organization as well as our community that we need to be doing better to market? And I've had a couple of those conversations recently, and I think we could reach out to more of those employees.
It wasn't necessarily scientific, but as part of the salary survey, the consultant told employees about their impressions. And, and the feedback they gave is, it did seem like there was a recognition on the part of employees about the benefits that the city provides and, and just the general benefit of city employment. And we've talked about marking that more in terms of the additional benefits beyond pay, but.
Are there any wellness benefits that the employees have gravitated to? And I, in my previous employments, I've had the programs, but I was rather sluggish when it came to signing up. I mean, some of the stuff I was doing anyway, but yeah, am I going to really go through all this trouble? I mean, you know, for an extra six hours off or, you know, for $15 a month.
So I was just talking with one of my staff members that, that handles our benefit coordination. And she is, we said, it's time to at least revisit to see what's out there, what that whole menu might look like, see if there's different approaches that we haven't tried that might get us some objectives. We, especially during COVID, we kind of just let wellness sit, kind of just put a pause on it. And our efforts were focused more on some of the tree of health initiative where we were able to get data and focus on that high-risk population. But we definitely think it's time to take a look and say, are there things we can be doing that's going to reach more than the 20% of our population that was engaged in some of the wellness things that continue to be engaged? And that, that was about the return that we were getting when we were trying to reach.
Were their health expenses lower?
Well, we didn't, we didn't have the ability to ask specific to that, to try to align it on just those individuals for HIPAA and other reasons.
So we, one of the issues we did was if you, you or your spouse voluntarily did a health assessment and we made all the services available, you could get a gift card. The participation in that wasn't all that great. So we're continuing, we need to keep looking for something that probably has better reception.
And even in those, are you able to drill down to see if they have a primary care doctor? If they don't, or go see a doctor regularly?
Call if that was in the health risk assessments that was provided to us, because it has been several years ago. I do know that that is a key element, not to. I do know that that is a key element, um, not to derail us, but I did attend the Saline County forum yesterday on and looking at some of the wellness pathways with some of the grants in our community. And one of the statistics that struck me was they relayed that healthcare providers only have the impact of 20% of someone's overall health. So environment and lifestyle dictates basically the other 80%. And that was a, I mean, I think that surprised everyone in the room to really take a look at why I think wellness needs another look to try to make it easy and make everything accessible to individuals because obviously we need the healthcare professionals, but they can only
My going back to work this afternoon, I'm not going to have that.
So successful implement, excuse me, implementation, geez, hold on. If you implement a program like that successfully, does it qualify you for lower health insurance premiums?
It could be a return on investment potentially. And for us, we are self-funded. So depending upon what that looks like overall with our carriers, I don't know, but if we're able to lower claims, then there's going to be impacts with everything related, both the administration fees and the stop loss and the claims. So I guess, yes, there there is a return. The difficulty that we also run into is a lot of wellness is prevention and sometimes prevention is very, very difficult to pinpoint the value for the expenses and the value on what that return and you can come up with estimates, but sometimes it's just hard to especially on short term, sometimes it takes several years.
And the other thing is our our premiums are already fairly low. I mean, we have pretty low premiums for our employees. So you know, having something that would offset and and make it valuable for the employees to be involved with when they're already at a pretty low point might be kind of difficult.
And and I hesitate to to bring this up, but another approach is you change those rates so you're discouraging unhealthy behaviors, smoking. And you get a discounted rate if you're doing exhibiting certain behaviors rather than you just have a terrific rate regardless.
I guess I would have thought the city already had that in place. The tiered premium for if you smoke. But it's not. Do city employees realize how good a plan they have and how cheap it is?
We try to tell them.
I I heard this for years.
So our employee council that just met this last week did give me feedback that they think we could improve our marketing about our job openings to start including, on average, this is what our benefit package is worth. I do think that's valuable. Um, the other side to that is usually employees understand how good it is if they are either retiring or going on COVID. Then we get a lot more feedback about not realizing the value of it.
Yeah, I mean, it really depends on what, you know, what, how old the employee is or the level of employee. If you're trying to hire somebody who's an 18, 19-year-old single person, the value of healthcare to them is not as much as it is to a guy like me who's got four kids and, you know, that that sort of thing. So trying to sell that or marketing that isn't is important, but I it's it's a, as as people have changed, I think it's, they don't realize the value of healthcare, maybe the way they had.
I had heard that conversation for years and I'd tell people that you've never had bad healthcare.
Not to get us bogged down. I don't, I don't know if we have to, we have to break it a quarter to four for I don't know if we can go on after that, but I noticed more on page 57 and we've got to get, we're going to go through parks and records. We got page 98.
Thank you.
Fair to Parks and Rec and Municipal Court, we probably need to keep moving.
I'm taking municipal court. Um, so we're in the middle of a prosecutor software transition. The vendor is kind of giving us no choice and CT's helpful in that and also implementing evidence.com, which has a lot of good functionality, but both of those represent kind of transitioning workload. Uh, you may recall that we agreed to cooperate or or work with a a group that was doing a social justice survey. Um, and we're aware of kind of their efforts so far. They don't know when to expect a result and don't know what those results will be, but fully expect that between the city manager's office, the judge, the prosecutor and probably the court clerk, that we're going to need to review that and respond in terms of just additional clarification and and a there's going to be concerns that come out of that. I think there's going to be recommendations that come out of that and we'll have to assess them and and those may drive some at least conversations, if not policy decisions. Uh, we have the whole new jail implementation as it moves to its new location. We have a joint agreement with the county that kind of shares responsibility, um, fingerprinting. Uh, needs will be split in two locations. We'll have to address that prisoner transport, although I I don't think it'll be too bad just from the the number of individuals that need transport and some of the options they have for video arraignment, but that's something to consider. And then the jail agreement itself, uh, which is probably more, uh, in in my court than the municipal courts, um, responsibilities, but having conversations with the county, thanks to Scott and and CPI efforts, we've been able to show them that we've got our jail days days down. We we want to be built on a daily basis rather than just a contracted amount for the year. We've got a price, we had quite a bit of conversation, but we're making headway there. Automated payment plans, the the court spends a lot of time trying to work with individuals that that are paying their fines over time and anything that we could do to to kind of automate that and make those payment arrangements and not have it be as labor intensive on the court side would be a a real efficiency gain. They've talked about putting in a kiosk at the, um, municipal court center so that people can check in for their probation appointments and not have to, um, have one-on-one contact with staff. Translation services, um, is something that's come up on occasion and talking with the the judge and the prosecutor, it's not been overly problematic, but when it does arrive, it it can be a challenge. There are services out there, whether it's, um, software, phone lines, you don't necessarily have to have a physical translator, um, and they can cover, you know, countless different languages. That's something that we need to prepare for. Um, we have got our jail days down by doing in-house arrest and and own recognizance bonds. But court has some concerns about the in-house arrest companies that we're utilizing and how well they're monitoring activities and violations of geographic boundaries, those type of things. Um, in all honesty, they've they've lobbied me to see if we can bring that in-house, bring it in-house in terms of our operations. There's some real social justice equity concerns there that makes it look like that's a money-making proposition for us for the judge to order that and then for us to provide it. So I I have reservations about uh, having that be in our purview and I think the approach more is going to be maybe a request for services, performance contract, monitoring performance, but I think we've got some attention to pay there. We talked about mental health court before. Um, because of the nature of, uh, the municipal court's inability to to order treatment programs and certain things, it really probably belongs in district court. It could help with the workload in municipal court. And so, um, the the city prosecutor and judge can be helpful as a resource, but uh, I think we're going to have to have that conversation with the county and the district court trying to uh, make that happen if that's something that we want to do. Um, technology-wise, I have technology needs as it relates to some of the software I mentioned earlier, but trying to set up for virtual hearings and video arraignment. Um, and again, I think, uh, CT can help with that and they're headed in that direction. And you may recall that we added an assistant prosecutor and we were able to fund that with savings of legal services we were paying to, uh, an outside firm to kind of fill in and as needed. Um, well, what we didn't really provide for was office space and I have to give Brock Abbey credit. He is wedged in an office in the police department as if he's a cast off of municipal court in, uh, in in the police department. So if we're really going to have him kind of integrated with the the assistant prosecutor role, we need to make some arrangements for him in the the court side. Downtown parking effectiveness and efficiency, court brought that up because of the work that it entails for them for a $5 parking ticket and whether people really believe it and and is it is it motivating people not to violate? They have people that just kind of see it like paid parking. It's just a monthly expense for them. Slanted downtown, on the other hand, I think sees it as, you know, a crucial issue in terms of getting people to turn over and and they have some of their own members and business owners that are apparently some of their own, the worst violators. So what court has said is, is there a way to to check the effectiveness of this and and our underlying assumptions and haven't had any conversations with SDI yet, but I think we could say, well, let's take a moratorium and assess whether we notice a difference or let's have a conversation. So I think that's something that we could take up in the coming year. We do probation services, but we don't have any ability to do random urine, urine analysis. It would require a private facility and some collection capabilities, but that would help in terms of our, uh, probation program. And then they struggle with programs that probationers can't afford and that gums up their process to proceed with, um, you know, court proceedings and and sentencing them to probation. So there's a pre-sentencing evaluation process. They get assessed for alcohol and drugs. Um, and the court ends up having to work with them to give them time to come up with enough money to pay for the assessment. Uh, um, so if there was a way for us to facilitate those, it might expedite the process. Similarly, um, treatment programs, while they would like to, um, make those available, there's cost issues that if there's a way to provide those um, that might actually help in the end in terms of getting to the root cause and then anger management. Um, the judge will order anger management and that's at the person's expense and they may not be able to afford it and then they're in violation of the court order and and in terms of probation and it just cascades. So, uh, that's pretty much it for municipal court. Um, questions, comments?
Is the social justice survey of citizens or of the city?
It's it's targeting people that are having interactions with municipal court and district court. And so it's kind of their experiences. Um, they provided the sample survey ahead of time. Has it impacted your income if you, because of the fines, have you had to do certain things? With the feedback I've had is they attempted to contact people one-on-one as they were, um, coming to court, but they were understandably distracted with other things and they weren't too receptive to taking a survey at the moment. And so I think they're still trying to sort through, uh, gathering the data.
It's, who's actually doing this survey?
Oh, um, Kristen, it's a group, Kristen Seaton and Gun, Andy Grass. I don't know that, I don't know that their group has an organizational name. If it does, I don't.
It was, yeah, I I listened to them talk one day, but I know which group you're talking about now. And I can't remember the parent group, but, okay. Just to know who to start expecting results from.
Yep.
Explain to me the mental health court.
Well, if you, if you think of a drug court in, rather than a prison sentence, they might be able to order a treatment program or certain things that they they have to do in lieu of probation, as a condition of probation and in lieu of fines or court sentence, mental health court could be that they need to go to anger management training. They need to get mental health treatment. They need to uh, try to address the underlying issues that are maybe causing their homelessness, causing their their social, uh, issues that cause public disturbances, trying to empower the court to require participation in programs that are targeting the underlying issue. And there's, there's models out there. I think, um, prosecutor Trocheck went and visited Lawrence or, yeah, I believe it was Lawrence and Douglas County. I have stood up a model. Um, but it's really going to take some conversation with uh, the district court. They've, you know, they've added, um, judges. I understand that the county commission has indicated uh, interest in a veterans' court, kind of the same thing. If you're a veteran with some some of the issues that that relate to that, that they would have a court they could go to and get different orders. Kind of a similar format, but I think it personally, I think there's a huge need. We're seeing mental health issues be more and more prevalent and the timing might be right in that they've added district judges, they're reconfiguring the court. They've got, they hopefully have some capacity and this just maybe dividing it up into categories that might be useful. All right. There is a lot here in parks. So some of the things that we have going on that I feel like are good news to report are, um, you may recall, we talked about playground replacement schedule. Um, that's funded through the special alcohol packs is what, that's not necessarily how that tax is set up, but that's how we've used it historically. That dollar amount has forced us into that catch is catch can model. Uh, what can we afford? We've tried to be more strategic in identifying all of our playgrounds and there's 26 of them, something like.
Yes.
And, uh, the life cycle of those and what that looks like, how much money we would need if if we're going to replace those on a schedule. And we're pretty close. Parks Department has gone back and kind of revisited. Can we get more life out of them based on National Parks and Rec standards and those type of things? So they're they're kind of refining that playground replacement schedule and I think we're on the verge of being able to say we have a target budget amount that could truly make that happen. What we have to do is stop rating that dollar, those dollars for other priorities and stay committed to playground. We've talked about the equipment replacement schedule. I think they they've done a terrific job of inventorying it and and making a first pass of putting that together and and that's that $400, $500,000 number. Bathroom renovation plan, we previously brought to you and you authorized adding dedicated staff to just go uh, fix bathrooms and, um, I've encouraged you to to go to the south bathroom at Bill Burke. They they did the concession stand as well. They blew that out and reconfigured it. It's now, um, a umpire changing room and bigger concession stand, epoxy floors. It it's night and day different from what it used to be. I think they're really starting to hit their stride in terms of doing the epoxy work and and trimming it out and all the other aspects of fixtures and what have you. So now we just need to stay with it and keep working bathroom by bathroom.
Our plan after Bill Burke is to get into Oakdale. That's our next step.
And Bill Burke itself and and we we keep referring to it as Bill Burke, but there are some Berkeley family recreation area improvements involved with that $4 million project that that we've taken on. So obviously the turf, um, we, there's some concrete work going on in Bill Burke right now. And we are finalizing design to go out to bid for backstops, fencing, dugouts, um, the other aspects of of the Bill Burke side of things. The thing that probably concerns me the most is, uh, coming up with the design to address drainage coming off the runway. We're we've identified it as something we have to do. It's just a little daunting in terms of what that solution might be and how much it might cost. Any news to report there?
I I don't have any news. The part of the issue is trying to identify the drainage solution and also allow ADA accessibility to the spectator seating. So that's, you have to integrate those, both of those concepts and that's the challenge there.
Yeah, a curb that redirects the water is not mountable for ADA purposes and so that gets challenging. Jerry, Ivy Pond and Water Feature, the, well, I'll let you report on that.
Yeah, the the design as of today for specifications and for filling that pond in, it was it's been being finished up today. It's gone through a city review with our city engineer. And, uh, those comments are given back to the designer and next week the RFP will be out to contractors to, uh, fill that in. And then we on on go on to the next step of identifying a water feature. The public citizen survey is been, is back and, um, I have not, I've yet to share that. However, it has been back and they seem to focus on a natural water feature that, uh, they would be pleased with as a replacement.
Slanted Tennis Alliance Operations Agreement, I put that one on there just and the ongoing conversation that we've been having, Slanted Tennis Alliance continues to meet with us on a regular basis. They continue to try to assess and refine their operations. I do think they're kind of in and have some growing pains. They're in that mode, but there, I've also told them that the way this whole process works, I I've referred to kind of the process we went through with Slanted Media Connection more than once, that the agreement is good through the end of the year, they can automatically renew or the governing the agreement is good through the end of the year, they can automatically renew, or the governing body can choose to provide notice that they don't want to renew. And there's a scenario there where they don't want to renew in the current form, they want to make some revisions to the provisions of the agreement. And they could re, renew in some altered form. You know, I've, I've had individual conversations with you, I've had individual conversations with citizens about the keypad access aspects of that. And I don't want to bog down here in that, but you know, they have taken on operational responsibility. If, if the courts are vandalized, the tennis nets are vandalized. It's their responsibility to fix them and repair them. That's kind of, that's some of the motivating factor for them, trying to have some access control. Or still kind of trying to adapt as a community, I think. So we'll see how that goes. And there could be other provisions that relate to the operations agreement. The bath house renovation project, obviously we've talked about that a lot and that's going to be something that no pun intended, the, the ball is in Slade Tennis's court at the moment in terms of coming up with a financial model that they want to propose. And they're, they're working through that. So I, we'll see what, how they come back. Pickleball courts touched on a little bit earlier, but we have a, a group of donors that, that want to remain anonymous, just they don't want the attention, they just want to see it happen. But so Jeff and his staff have been working on specing out or soliciting bids from a designer to design installation of post tensioned concrete on top of the south tennis courts, as well as reconfiguration of the fence around it to dedicate that to pickleball courts. The donors have a general price range based on our estimating and aren't daunted by that. So our plan is get the design, go to bid, get that number finalized, confirm with the donors their willingness to, to fund that. And they would just authorize us to proceed and they would fund it potentially, which is impressive. Similarly, we have another donor that has approached us about wanting to contribute significant amounts of money to formal garden improvements in particular. Had conversations with them about other alternatives. A part of their concern is the river project will remove the master gardener plot there along the river. And they want to expand and improve the formal garden. So Jeff's working with them on that. Again, it's kind of, it's a donor funded project. The next thing we've got is park master plan. So I'm going to pause here. Do you have any questions about any of those things that were on that, that slide bullet list or in that general vein?
Umpire changing room. Do we have male and female?
We do not. It's one space and it's single use.
Okay.
There's a shower and one, one stall or one fixture and a sink. You know, lots from the inside, so it could be used. It's actually a code. We put a code on it. So that code would only be given to individuals who are authorized to enter.
Laura, you might give an update on the C X T bathrooms?
C X T bathrooms were delivered last Wednesday and dropped on Wednesday onto the locations where we built up infrastructure for. The tying into the utilities. We, we provided some rough ins for those for those facilities to be connected to. The water hookups for the south one, which is in by fields four, five and six is, has water. Sewer's going to be, sewer's connecting today. And electric should be this week as well, should be today. So those should be operational next week. The north bathroom, the north C X T bathroom is a little more extensive because we have to run a longer water, a longer water and sewer line for that and connect to the existing utilities. And that's going to be a little more delayed, probably up to two weeks.
And then if you haven't already seen it or asked me or been asked yourself about the, the new C X T there by the concession stand, it is noticeably higher than the other buildings around that. That is the flood plain, the applicable flood plain level to allow us to build there in the first place. And in remapping, the, the elevation changed. And so there'll be a set of stairs and then there'll be side ram, ADA compliant side ramps off of it. But you're going to walk by the concession stand sitting here and the bathroom is going to be elevated not that far away. Right.
So that'll take a little more time to get that public use, but utilities will be hooked up very shortly.
With, with discussions with Slade Tennis, could you bring up options for court access for a person who does not have a smartphone? Be it a kiosk, you know, the touchscreen, I mean, whatever comes into discussion, but that's.
No, that's what I was alluding to before, and we have an operations agreement with them as it currently sits. They're aware of the concern. We, we continue to have ongoing conversations. But I have been deferential to them that as the agreement is currently written, they have, have some discretion. What I've been trying to convey to them is the concern, the, the feedback that we're getting. And then if we can't get, find an acceptable solution, then we, you as the governing body may say, rather than just straight up renew, we want to reopen this agreement and talk about that particular provision in particular.
When we get feedback concerning tennis facility, access, whatever it is, who should we refer people to?
Slade Tennis Alliance, yeah, as a starting point.
We, we have their contact information. So if you wish to refer them to Parks and Recreation, we can give them contact information.
Okay.
Are they listed? I mean, can a person? Well, in the old days, I was going to say.
They have a website.
Whatever the modern day version of that is. I mean, so there is a website, okay.
They have a social media presence.
Yeah, website and Facebook.
Yeah.
Okay. The pickleball. You know, I've walked those south courts. I don't see a thing wrong. But why would we spend money overlay that?
They're busting up to the point that when we looked at, you know, trying to keep them and maintain them long-term. The south courts aren't as bad as the north courts. The north courts are a trip.
I can see doing a overlay on the north courts.
Yep. Well, so, you know, this is kind of that, that public, private fundraising transition issue. We, we took the approach that the tennis complex was going to be the new venue and all that was going to be removed. And then the conversation was, well, what can we do to make use of it? Long-term, if we can do the post tensioned concrete, that holds up. And we've solved the problem once and for all. We started putting pickleball lines and paint on the south courts. They don't look that bad right now, but it's an annual cracking, peeling, heaving. It's just, it's just a matter of time.
Right. Post tension, post tensioned concrete is the technology that gets you from a five to 10-year plan to a 20 to 25 or even longer.
Okay. My intention wasn't to go through the park master plan item by item and we've had some of this conversation before, I believe. But as, as some background, we did a prioritization exercise, we did a scoring exercise. We by resolution adopted the, the park master plan items in a priority order. And since that time have been very vigilant about trying to take them in order. There are some things that, you know, plumbing fixes or lighting fixes make sense to just do in one fell swoop. But what we've done is gone through and category, further categorized those. So the first category there, we've got 30 items complete off the park master plan. And I'm not going to read them to you, but some of the things we're, we're talking about, but we just kind of knocked those out. The next category, we've got 51 items that, that I would deem as being underway in some fashion. And again, that's everything from maintenance and mulch to Jerry Ivy Pond to sidewalk work. You name it, but feel like the, that Parks has got those in their wheelhouse and getting them taken care of. So then the next category, the things that we identified that need to be factored into annual maintenance. And we pulled eight items out of there that if we are more intentional about including them in our annual maintenance, we should be able to address them. Electrical service, repairs to picnic tables, trail maintenance, rejuvenating landscape beds. Now, some of those probably do require a budget infusion, rejuvenating landscape beds being an example of that. Cosmetic repairs and replacing picnic tables. So then the next category, we are restroom related. So we think we can address those with our approach to restrooms. And as Jeff mentioned, Oakdale's next on the list. So that, those costs are going to add up. And the other thing I should mention is, as Debbie reported early on, we've taken part of the special sales tax, $500,000 a year and dedicated it to park master plan items. So we've accumulated a balance because we haven't spent $500,000 a year. But there, there's going to be a point somewhere around the future where we've spent that balance down and 500,000, we, we could do more than 500,000 if we want, if we wanted to, or we're just going to have to pace ourselves. But bathrooms will certainly contribute to spending that, that dollar amount down quite a bit. Playground, there are eight playgrounds called out in the park master plan that we, we're trying to address through the, the playground replacement schedule. There are 13 thing, items that seem river related and really need to be coordinated with river renewal process, project. There were 35 items that we identified for review or reconsideration. And some of those are the concerns about railings and, and founding, building foundations, those kinds of things that we just really need to assess. We, we may assess them and say, yep, that's a valid issue. We need to address it. First thing we need to do is work our way through these and, and just take a second look at them. Other examples, there was a recommendation to eliminate parking at Jerry Ivy Park, curbside parking. So you help with circulation, but that's, that's high school students at South High that use that as their overflow parking. So before we just run headlong into something like that, we, that's something we need to review and consider before we pull the trigger. So there's just kind of a hodgepodge of odds and ends. There's some abandoning of agreements and park facilities, that type of thing. And others are, you know, just presuming there's a water fountain there that isn't working, you need to replace it. And park staff's aware that, well, there's one around the corner or we, we don't know that we need to replace it, that type of thing. So.
Underway means, underway means they'll be done this year?
Well, the bathroom remodel is probably a three to four year project. So it started.
Well, that category of underway.
Yeah. The, for, I can't say that all of them will be done in 2023, but they are, you know, something that Parks is actively working on. I think one of them in there is trash cans. They've identified a trash can and whether we can order it, take receipt and get it, you know, get them deployed in the system, not sure, but we're working on it.
I would say that, that says, that means we have a plan for how, because some of it, like all the concrete work, we're doing a lot of concrete work this year. Most of the ADA stuff will get done, but we still have another one or two phases of concrete, sidewalks, other stuff. So that's in the underway category, but it's going to take several years to get it completely done.
Has there been any studies to look at parking at Bill Burke? Parking.
Sorry, what?
Add parking at Bill Burke, come.
There have been, quite some time ago, we made parking reconfiguration improvements and then we added some parking on the north end. I'm sorry.
99 spots.
And then there, there's been conversation about parking on the other side of the levee, but it was all we could do to get permission to put emergency access across the levee. It's not intended to have regular vehicular traffic on it. So if we were to do anything else, it would be more on the north and kind of curling around behind field eight. There's been some conversation about putting a road under Magnolia and parking on the south side. But the reality is people won't use it. I mean, our experience has been when we get complaints that there's no parking, there's no parking in proximity to the ball field they're trying to get to. But those 99 spaces on the north end generally have some space left. So it's, it's a configuration challenge as much as anything.
I guess I had wondered about the abandoned soccer field.
On the other side of the levee?
Next to the river.
Yeah, on the north end. Yeah, that, that's what I was referring to, kind of behind field eight. But human nature leads us to believe people won't use it or it, it won't stop the complaints. Let's put it that way. So there, the north end, there were 99 spaces added there. And then if we were going to do anything, you'd kind of come a little bit further south off of that. And I, I've actually suggested to staff that when we have big events, we ought to inventory available spaces or even take some drone photos just to kind of document what, what we're actually seeing. And that grass area could be an overflow parking. But it's just a function of people wanting, as much as anything, I think it's a function of people wanting to park in proximity to the field that they're trying to get to. So the park master plan items that are remaining, there's 73 of them. And they're shown there in, in rank order. So some of those are still pretty straightforward. Other, others of those are probably project policy conversations. Jerry Ivy Pond certainly was a high priority for everyone involved. The Indian Rock Overlook is next on the list. It shows up, I think a couple of times in there, the, the overlook, and then there's a reference to kind of the shelter. But the park master plan vision is a venue, you know, the reservable space structure that's more than just a whole shelter house at considerable expense.
Community center concept, similar to Friendship Center or Carver Center.
And my intention isn't necessarily to, to walk through all those with you today, but with this methodology, as we get everything else going with Parks and we have funds available and the intent will be to work our way through this list unless we have something that we collectively say needs to jump the priority list.
How much does the outstanding list cost? I mean, if some, you know, I mean, Bill Gates comes through, wants to drop a check on this, how much will we ask for?
I, I don't know that we've put a number, the, the park master plan consultant.
It's going to be Jeff Bezos on Amazon, Jeff.
Hey, you're right.
When the park master plan was put out, they said it was $6 million, but I have no idea how they came up with that number. Light to me.
$2,018.
We thought the Indian Rock Shelter alone was four and a half million, I thought.
I honestly don't remember.
Maybe it wasn't that much, but it was. It was the biggest single item maybe other than Jerry Ivy.
So I guess our intent would be to get through the projects we're currently working on, but simultaneously start the planning for these things. And that could be a design exercise and, and it, it's a prominent area. It does get quite a bit of use. It is challenged in terms of utilities and parking. But if it's a priority, it, there's a field in proximity, utilities aren't that hard. It's one of the highest views in town. It could be, you know.
So this could be one of those projects that we might do the design plan a year or two ahead of time, more kind of like the fire station. We're going to start planning it, even the plans will hold for a year or two.
Certainly, yes. Yep. Helps us kind of get a budget number, helps us put a plan together, possibly raise funds. And set some priority to it if it's, you know, too expensive and maybe it gets put off and held in a van.
Designed for something like that, if you just had ballpark estimate?
Well, one of the things we've talked about is, is it, you know, new construction or are there prefab options out there that would be acceptable? And I think this is probably a good opportunity for something like that. And there's some, some attractive wood timber structures that you can buy as a kit kind of thing and pay someone to put together. Put some masonry on it. A little bit easier to have some known cost to go with it. So.
I've, I've not been inside the modular bathrooms while I was out there last week. They're, they're, I gotta admit, better looking facility than I thought they would be from the outside. I was impressed, so.
Yeah, the painted interiors, painted floors, a paint, epoxy paint. But there's some additional work that we can do, but yeah, they, they're stout. They're, they're efficient. They're able to get in and get out. They're they're efficient. They they're able to get in and get out.
So it reminds me of a a good, a great base, almost like you walk into a tenant type building where it's a white box, and you can paint it, you can epoxy for it, you can uh, make it your own almost, but we and we have that on our plan to include that in our theme of bathroom improvements across the parks and rec system.
Put one of those love Solana decals or emblems on the back of it.
Yeah. So I share all that with you just to kind of confirm we have a priority for the park master plan, and we kind of have a strategy. We're picking our way through them and eh, at your leisure, you're welcome to go through those lists and see if you still agree with the priorities, but um, unless we get some direction, otherwise we're just going to keep plugging away at it. Um, additional items that Parks and Rec have identified are on that next slide. Trail gaps. We have some funding set aside for trails, but we have some gap challenges that might take some work to make connections, that type of thing. Centralized facilities, much like Public Works needing a as general services facility, parks is wedged into Oatdale Park and and uh, Stimmel, which a lot, quite a few people don't even realize we have a property clear on the north end of town that we store out of, so they could certainly benefit from centralized uh, facilities. Centennial Park, um, didn't necessarily make the park master plan. There's been all sorts of conversations. The neighborhoods had feedback, but that's something to consider whether we um, put together a plan and try to make some investment improvements there. Um, skate park probably should be next on the list compared to bike pump track, but we have a skateboard park, but it's it's showing its age and could be eh, improved certainly. Bicycle pump track, if you're not familiar with them, um, kind of a circuit track that BMX riders can pedal for ways and have bank curves and hills and jumps and a whole nother venue. Um, median landscaping, kind of a com- combination of Public Works and Parks responsibility as well, and then downtown landscaping. And then uh, building facilities has their eye on fire station number four if it if fire department moves out. Uh, they may not be the only ones that want it, but that that's come up in the conversation, and they might be able to occupy it uh, as is, but it, you know, probably would take some renovation as well. Um, Union Pacific Train Station redevelopment, eh, that's been in the conversation, community conversation. Um, I don't know that that's a little bit bit out of the ordinary for the Parks Department to take on, but it's a venue opportunity. Um, eh, there there might be need for acquiring additional cemetery land in anticipation of of the cemetery's lifespan. Uh, golf maintenance shop, um, community center maintenance and renovations, so Friendship Center and and Carver Center, I think came up in the conversation earlier today, that they're they're showing their age. And then we've had the conversation about tree trimming, a combined approach for parks and streets. Our grant application was not successful. Uh, it was on an emergency grant basis, so we were trying to kind of sell it as uh, emergency preparedness, and that that wasn't successful.
Was the train station on Bishop?
Yeah, yep. Their um, Union Pacific actually approached staff quite some time ago and asked us whether we'd have interest in it. We toured it, indicated eh, between us or, you know, the community in general, and it it seemed like there were some opportunities there. And they came back and said, well, that's our central dispatch, and we're not ready to to give it up yet. So it's just kind of.
Well, I thought they were still operating now, but.
Yeah.
They still have a satellite dish and communication tower there.
Boy, that'd make a nice restaurant, dance hall, and oh, wow, I'd jump on, jump at opportunity for that.
It's a, it's a quaint building for sure.
Beautiful building. If you like trains, it's a beautiful building.
That does not show with the one in that way.
So it is three forty-five. If we want to pause for public comment.
Kind of just.
Now, we can print that pause and questions and comments on the items we just covered.
Quick question on the skate park. You know, we always worry about liability, of course Nancy does anyway.
Yeah.
Um, have we had any issues with any?
No.
I mean, I haven't ever heard of any. I just, I always thought that was an accident, you know, looking to happen.
I'm aware. I was aware of one concern where there was a um, some damage done by, I believe, by vandalism. Park staff immediately addressed it and.
But I'm I'm talking about riders and.
Oh, yeah. Um, they certainly have uh, twice in the last year, the that community, that interest group has approached me just wanting upgrades. Uh, they feel, you know, it's not modern, as 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 Mistress Frank said, and they want something more modern, something with concrete instead of steel, something that doesn't get so hot uh, as steel does, but.
But I think they start with a presumption that they're taking a risk, and as long as we don't have a known dangerous condition, um, and we don't open ourselves up for liability, maybe. That's not to say that.
I did go over there after a community meeting several years ago and and met with some of them, and of course, I don't get on a skateboard ramp, but they were showing me some of the metal edges are actually exposed. If you don't hit it right and you're falling, I mean, the the possibility of a gash wound is actually pretty, pretty real.
So they don't have a history of serious injuries over there?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Not that it rises to an insurance claim with the city anyway. I don't know if they might get injured and go home and take care of it themselves, but hasn't been an issue that made our radar.
Uh, you had that bicycle pump. What do you call it?
Pump track.
Track. Uh, something they're doing in Wichita, bike trails. We don't have a lot of bike trails, but we do got some pretty nice ones. Putting in bicycle maintenance stations. Where if you get a flat tire, put the bike up on a rack.
And then there's a, is a, well, I, yeah, I think it includes a uh, airbag small air compressor.
Yeah.
Um, has a little electrical component, so it runs. So yeah, I've seen those. Uh, I'm I'm familiar with those.
Yeah, I thought it was a good idea. Bicycle exchange down there is kind of sponsoring a lot of it.
Hmm.
That'd be a good one to have along the river trail, too.
Yeah, well, that's kind of what I'm thinking is we expand the trail system.
Are we going through? I know this was still Parks or Animal Services.
I think we like. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we got time, yeah, okay.
Okay, so animal services, um, the staffing's a challenge for them, and as a reminder, they're really trying to run a twenty-four seven operation between being on call and responding and caring for eh, the animals at the shelter. Um, and that that they've taken a a limited approach to shelter office hours and and uh, by appointment. And we had a little bit, we've had some feedback where there's a general expectation that they should be open just for walk-in traffic, but it seems to be functional. If we were going to go to that to that model, I think that really starts to impact staffing. Um, and so that's that's a point of conversation. In all honesty, I worry about how much on call and how much schedule we're already putting on them to kind of keep up the twenty-four seven operation. But I know uh, that's been a point of conversation. We have a crematorium that we repaired, and it doesn't seem like it was all that long ago that we repaired it, and it's in need of repair again. Um, previously, we used to do cremations for hire, um, and actually vets would have their cut clients pay them. Eh, we'd pick the the animal up, cremate it, return it to the vet, and then they'd return it to their customer. We've we pulled back from that and used the crematorium for um, just kind of our uh, animals that need to be disposed of. And so some of the conversation is, do we have to cremate at all? Um, that turns into quite a, it can turn into quite a policy discussion about alternate means of disposal, but from a pure dollars and cents standpoint, eh, if we could get out of the crematory business mall, business altogether, that might be helpful. Um, uh, the need for additional dog park kind of on two fronts, just the the desire and demand for it and need for shelter expansion in the backside of the shelter lot is a dog park currently, so. Um, there are donation, a significant amount of donation funds that the animals' shelter has. I think that eh, creates an opportunity to to make some improvements in the shelter itself. Um, and there there's also ways to automate cleaning and and make it more efficient and easier on our employees possibly.
What's our expense to upkeep the dog park? I mean, as far as obviously, is there pickup we have to do, or the people that are there do a pretty good job of that?
Um, it's a, um, you know, we have mowing, and we have irrigation repair, uh, so we have some turf maintenance. Uh, we do pick up uh, uh, trash, but as far as we do provide the doggy bags, waste bags, and uh, there is some pickup mildly, but they generally, as a community or as a dog lover community, they do a good job of picking it up after themselves and making sure it's in the trash can.
Yeah, I think one of our bigger maintenance expenses is fixing the fence when the auto club goes off track and comes into the dog park, but they actually pay us back.
Would would we have a a second location in a different part of the community that would be?
I think we could. Um, one, one of my visions is.
Horse shoe throwing.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, it citing it becomes a challenge in terms of the neighbors and not wanting it in their backyard. Um, I don't know if the dog park that that we now have helps kind of demonstrate it's not as problematic as people might think. Um, yeah, the the horseshoe pits isn't a bad idea.
That isn't. And and one of the reasons I'm asked, and again, it's, I don't know what the fencing, it's a fairly inexpensive, but I am shocked at how much it's used. I mean, I really am. When we did that, I thought, that's a nice, but you know, I, every time I drive by there, I bet there's five to ten cars.
Right.
And one of the things that I heard one time is somebody was, when the cars were using the track, the dog parks closed.
Yep.
So I think a second dog park would be beneficial um, to the to that that dog community, mainly on weekends when it that tra- the.
Right.
The airport.
There's eight, eight races approximately a a year, and it's either Saturday or Sunday or both days, and there is a considerable amount of complaints.
And I do like that idea of kind of where the horseshoe was. It's not near a neighborhood. It's our ground. That's.
Where's the ball field on the Sunset? Sunset Park.
And there's not a lot of houses there either.
That's what I mean.
There's a train track there.
I would, I would personally think that would.
Yeah.
Next to tennis court.
Tennis court, yes.
That would be something that.
The, another thing that has come up in conversation in the past, and I forgot to include, is uh, desire for bathrooms at the Berkeley family dog.
Well, Sunset would have them.
Sunset would be a different part of town.
Build it and they will come. It seems like that works for the dog park.
So there's a lot of area.
Well, and a lot of neighborhoods wanted me to notice, I think, three of our five housing proposals had dog parks included.
What I saw here in the master plan, uh, Lumperton Park, possible dog park.
The park master plan offered that up, but.
Where is Lumperton Park?
The.
A little hard to get in and out.
Dead end to State Street, eh, State Street and Broadway.
Oh, right over the, by the.
North and kind of under the dock.
Yeah, so.
You're under the over.
Not a lot of infrastructure there.
Yeah, the challenge there is it's a real small footprint. There's no parking and.
And where the overpass starts to rise up, it's kind of hard to get in and out.
Yeah.
We should pursue that horseshoe thing.
It's the other location that that got my attention was Indian Rock. There's a shelter and a field next to the shelter. Yeah, there you go, Jacob.
All that open area there.
Yeah, you can make use of that that shelter and their and attached bathrooms there and fence part of that area is a.
That's Glenerford Hill Park right across the street there.
Yeah, no, I, right, yeah, right there, there's a shelter house and then an open field next to it, so I think there's, I think there's demand. I think there's some opportunities, and the horseshoe pits might be an easy conversion, actually. We'd have to go through a public process to say.
Development proposals, how much emphasis they put into it all.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so if you can, moving on to facility maintenance, um, we got the facility audit coming forward that's going to have results. Janitorial staffing has been an ongoing challenge. The quality of the bathrooms helps eh, appearance and might diminish complaints some. Also can help with making it easier to clean them, but we still have the underlying issue of just not having enough staff or or staff time, and it's kind of been divided responsibilities. Troy Reiner in in facilities has a willingness to try to tackle that, and and between Jeff and Troy and Dennis Arnold and his new position, I've asked them to put their heads together and see what they can come up with, but I I don't think it's as easy as just taking the current staff that we have to really hit our marks on that one. Um, and then responsibilities, um, are organization wide in terms of eh, the facilities group. Um, not only are they doing parks things, but they're doing HVAC and maintenance across the organization, which creates staffing problems. And then roofs on facilities are just a category in and of themselves. That's a challenge. Um, I think eh, Troy and his his group are willing to tackle anything. Sometimes they may be their own worst enemy of, yeah, we can do that, but the the volume that they're trying to to address is is much bigger than their staff for them.
Will any of that be approached by the Snyder study that we get uh, coming up?
Jacob, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, that, so lots of the HVAC systems will be HVAC lighting, really places where we can find energy efficiencies. It's not going to replace a lot of the roofs, and it does do some building envelopes, uh, so like uh, Smoky Hill Museum, it would replace all of the windows at that facility. Um, but not not necessarily the individual roofs across the organization, but lots and lots of HVACs.
The golf, uh, moving to the golf course, uh, I just felt an obligation to full disclosure. But while it kind of gets presented as an enterprise fund, it is not operating as a self-sufficient enterprise fund. Um, you know, on a regular basis, greens fees and operations are eh, they're trying to hit their marks there, but we invest in the irrigation system as just a debt financed by the general fund. Um, when we talk about golf carts, uh, that's part of that capital equipment inventory that we shared with you. Um, any other major maintenance items are just uh, offline, things that can't get covered through the annual operating budget.
How 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 short were we last year on our operating budget at the golf course?
We weren't that far off. Just for the year-to-year operations, we had the the extended uh, memberships because of the the driving range being.
The lack of use of.
I want to say.
Like thirty thousand, thirty or forty thousand dollars. Yeah, it was not too far off.
Yeah.
But that doesn't include the, I mean, all the mowers and the equipment, everything we pay for, the irrigation system that we paid for not too long ago was all outside of that.
Or if we consider future, some of these future improvements.
Yep.
That are on the screen.
And those mowers are for the exclusive use of the golf.
They're not, they're not mixed in with other. There's a rough mower, yeah, yeah. Um, so aesthetic site improvements in general, um, you know, the facilities and and grounds, and then bathroom renovations um, on the site. Uh, are one of the things we identified there. I think that, Jeff?
Uh, no, uh, no, just the uh, you know, that it's a former hangar for the airports, and we're using it as a parks maintenance shop, and it's it's seen its day and it's aged.
Is that watered from well water or city water?
Uh, the irrigation is well water.
Right, so if rain decided to never come here for the next two years, and we had to use the R word, ration water, the golf course would not be cut under that or.
Can they pump water out of the river, that down below? And I was thinking they had a line that ran down to the, down Crawford. There is a line. I thought we went on a tour of that building one time, and they.
It goes up and over the, it's, yeah, under the bridge, but that's taking it from the well, bringing it to the to the east.
Is that the wells uh, directly south of the Crawford Street Bridge?
Off the hill, not Crawford.
Uh, the wells are around Bill Burke Park. There's four different wells that support.
They're in Bill Burke.
They're in Bill Burke and across the, across Crawford on the other.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Okay, I've I've seen, yeah, by two wells there.
Correct, those are.
Mr. Ryan was finding me. We took a tour of the golf facility, and there's a line that comes up Crawford, and we went to the pump room, and there's this huge tank there, and I don't know if that water is just for drinking purposes or whether it's.
That uh, it's my understanding that that tank is not being used. It's a direct draw from the pond for the retention pond that's outside of that building, so.
Hey.
But I I need to clarify that, but I don't believe it's being used.
That was a fun tool. We got the, we wrapped the golf course carts and everything, yeah. That was a fun tool. We got to wrap the golf course carts and everything, man.
Okay, the recreation division, um, we have dialed back staffing, uh, COVID and and. Uh, staffing challenges, we've kind of adapted, but one thing we certainly heard from you loud and clear recently was play day in the park. Uh, we want to reinstate that. Um, in fact. Do you want to touch on where we're at on that a little bit, Jeff?
Uh, we're looking at trying to keep the major elements of that pro of that special event. And the major elements are uh music, music performances at the stage. A flag raising event and hot dogs and uh.
Ice cream.
What's that?
Ice cream.
And ice cream, sorry, thank you, yeah. I wasn't, wasn't finished yet, but um. And then also crafts or some type of games, kind of a carnival type atmosphere. Uh, so we want to bring, make sure we touch on all those elements of that. Uh, we're looking at different ways we can do that. Uh, look like it might be a, an all staff type of contribution to that special event. Um, so we're just looking at different options of how we can make those elements happen.
In, in the past, we've paid an outside party to, to do that on behalf and. Uh, those costs were approaching twenty thousand, so I having conversations about. I remember when I first started handing out hot dogs and whether we take that approach or whether we need to do some competitive. Uh, price comparisons, but uh, the staff's working on that. Um, just additional programming in general, um, opportunities, but staffing is certainly a balancing factor there. Um, trails and in terms of writing trails and and that amenity, special events programming. Uh, seniors programming and then we used to do special population programming. Uh, and they had someone that had training and and a skill set and that's a challenge for us now, so.
Um, we're looking at partnering with various organizations in the city, whether it be the library, OCCK. Um, Choices Network, uh, they offer some similar programming. If we can be a partner with them to continue to offer that program. And to offset some of the uh typical staff that we had running that in the past, pre-COVID. Uh, we want to continue to offer that uh option of programs to the community for those special populations or. Uh, therapeutic recreation and seniors as well. And we've also had several conversations with uh the senior center. And with some of the different retirement home or assisted living places about continuing our partnerships that we had prior to COVID. Uh, to help uh offer some senior programming and they, they seem to be willing to do so.
But I, I want to be clear, I, that this service level has been dialed back COVID staffing. And challenges to staff backup, especially with people with dedicated skill sets, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've kind of reached a, I don't know, the exit. A balancing point in terms of feedback and our interaction with the users of these, this programming, but it's not what it used to be.
What was the summer program we were doing at uh the Field House with daycare? Is that? Still ongoing or is that been tried? Did we terminate that during COVID or how did that work? I'm, I'm, all that kind of runs together.
That, that was.
Twenty, sorry, oh, twenty twenty, we did not have that program. Um, twenty twenty one. And twenty twenty two, um, the previous two years, we did run that program. I think twenty one, we did it as a restricted number of weeks. I think we kept it six weeks. Uh, last year we brought it back and we had a grant that we brought before you to help assist with. Um, assist with uh wages and also offer scholarships. Uh, we had seventy, sixty-five to seventy participants last summer and that's kind of what we expect for that program. And we, that grant is, was continued and extended until this June. Uh, we have to expend the funds uh and if we don't expend them, we have to give them back. Uh, so it's our, our task to use the funds to the, to, to provide the, continue providing that program, but that, yes, that. That day camp program or age group. Uh, school age program still exists and we were committed to continuing to do so.
And how were we handling the meals or what? Cause I kind of remember we were talking about having to do something outside, but.
Uh, the school district typically has always provided our meals and they still do. However, they take, they kind of scaled back the number of weeks. Uh, they're only doing five weeks of summer lunches where they deliver those lunches. Uh, we've been researching uh several options. One is uh through St. John's Missionary Baptist Church. They've always been willing to provide us meals for the additional three weeks of our eight week camp. Um, the YMCA also has a similar type of food service that they would, they could bring or we can go pick up. I, I believe there's options for us to continue feeding children and not have to brown bag it.
How will that work next year without the grant money?
We would have to address wages uh to uh to try to make sure we recruit the appropriate number of staff.
And that made a noticeable difference, correct?
Oh, yes, yeah. Uh, as soon as that grant was approved by yourselves. Uh, we had, within seven days, we had twenty, twenty-five applicants, whereas we had two prior to that grant. So.
Back up here to the play day in the park. I assume that you've got notes and everything in place from the past, how that all.
We do, we do.
You got a new person coordinating it. One of the people that pushed me to bring that back was Bill Ficus. So has anyone been in contact with him? I, I don't have his contact info and.
Uh, we've met with this Mr. Ficus three times.
Very good.
Um, but.
Pricing may be an issue.
You don't, you, you won't keep him happy.
No guarantees.
He'll work.
Uh, TPEC, it's under a private operation agreement, management agreement, um, but we have building maintenance responsibilities there. You know, they've been making improvements. They, through the Great Plains sponsorship were, and our renewal. Uh, that created some funding to, to commit towards building renovations and improvement bathroom improvements and updates. Um, one thing that comes up in the conversation frequently is the parking lot and it just. Size relative to the capacity of the building. Now we have the tennis complex. Um, now that the rodeo ground is cleared, we have a better sense of maybe how the campus is going to be used. We've got some grass at the end of, of the existing parking lot um that could either be turned into over. It kind of gets used for overflow parking anyway, but it might be time to think about the site configuration. In support of uh the tennis complex and TPEC's over floor parking.
Wouldn't that more logically fit into the river renewal? Isn't there a pump station going in at about that? Gateway Road, uh, I mean, from what I remember of the river plans. There was some substantial things planned for that.
Yeah, I, I.
Curvature up there.
The focus is kind of inside that, that road ring, which the river works probably going to be from the road towards the river, but. They've got grass uh kind of on that east end on either side of the midway, but inside the uh. Now you know what the name of it is, Bob Flaherty Drive or the, the circular loop, so it'd be more kind of in the internal part of the campus. Um, I think that's it. Jeff, did any? Thing you want to touch on?
No, I don't have anything additional. Uh, that was a lot.
Not looking for any other projects, huh?
No, I think we've taken, you know, I think we, my, my task for Mike was to address master plan items. And the ones we took on were the big ones. Uh, Jerry Ivy Pond, concrete improvements, Billburg Park. And uh, we're, we're signing up for more.
Uh, it, it's awful easy to focus on the thing that we're most interested in and, and how quickly can it progress, but. You know, those things that have been completed, those things that are underway um are significant too, so. And you know, the painting, um, getting that contracted out and painting shelters in, in one big swoop. May go unnoticed. Probably more noticeable that they're in bad repair than they're in good repair. That's, that's an account.
Uh, we might go back to animal shelter. Uh, people are still not happy with that operation. With it being a closed building. I don't know how it operated so many years. Being an open public building and now it just can't be done.
Volunteers. It was very much volunteer.
They still got volunteers.
Uh, volunteers had a lot more uh open discretion and uh free reign than they do currently.
We have uh, we have successfully made Wednesdays available as an open door day where it's a non appointment required day. And that's been very well receptive. So we have Wednesday and uh. Saturday for those two days of being no appointment required. Uh, Monday and Thursdays are always our surgery days where we have the contracted veterinarian coming in. Um, and then we're still trying to provide animal control every day, so uh they're, they're at full staff. If we somehow find ourselves without full staff or they resign or um then that's where it becomes a, a challenge.
Yeah.
So, so if someone wants to renew their license or register a new puppy. The only way to get that done is to make an appointment or come on Wednesday.
Um, the, they'll generally, um, if it's a simple license, they'll do that at the counter. Uh, but an adoption or a surrender, it's a little more complicated and we prefer an appointment. Um.
So to renew a license, you can walk in?
Yes.
Anytime.
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the other thing that I would tell you, I'm trying to be a little diplomatic, I guess, but. If the my, what the appearance from the. Uh, from the public perspective in terms of it being open and available. Didn't have a full appreciation of the bedlam and the stress behind the scenes that was going on with. Leadership and staff and volunteers and, and it just was. Not a sustainable model. I mean, they did it for a long time, but it was. A good conscience. We just weren't treating our employees very.
So they still use the furnace for their own cremations and roadkill and stuff?
Yes, yeah, we operate about once a week and we do a kind of a bulk cremation. Uh, for primarily uh what we find on the road.
And you say you're having maintenance problems with it?
Uh, we, the refractory was repaired uh three or four years back, uh, as, as Mistress Frank said. Uh, it's the, it's the uh, it's the firing mechanism and the amount of airflow. Uh, how it's, as the house designed. Um, you know, so we have to do smaller. Loads. And when, when we do smaller loads, it seems to work fu- fine. Uh, there are occasionally where we have to do it more than once. Um, if we wait and do larger loads, then it, it doesn't work very well.
Don't need any more details.
Sorry.
Ask more questions.
And not to go too far either, but to my prior point. Uh, in our previous model with our staffing challenges, we had rec. Uh, coordinators that signed up to be in the parks and rec department that got to run the crematorium, they didn't have a choice. Uh, uh, we need, we don't have anybody else. It's, it's on you. And he. He took one for the team and, and did it, but that, that's how helter skelter our staffing.
Uh, the other thing I had is.
And he didn't stay around very long.
Got a lot of donations. Can they be used for staffing?
When I see a special adoption event and the prices for dogs and puppies, I'm a little shocked. What did I see? Like two hundred fifty dollars for a puppy the other day? Is that right?
Um, I think that's the max, um. I, I don't have the prices in front of me, but it is two hundred plus.
Why is it so much?
Uh, well, it includes a spay and neuter. It includes a microchip. And then there's a, there's a demand. I mean, uh, the, the fees are. Part of the uh comprehensive fee schedule, so if. I mean, I won't speak.
So it's helping support the budget. Selling dogs.
Oh, yeah.
Their operating budget.
City's been taking care of those animals until they're.
Right.
That's.
Shelter's full, shelter's full. Maybe if the average person could afford to go get a dog, they would.
There are several, I can tell you that they, they do several. Uh, sales kind of events where they do discount the price and reduce the price, especially when we get to.
I've never paid near the.
People are paying more than that for, for dogs, I mean.
Have you been to the vet lately?
Right. I mean, you know, if you can hang out in church and get one free if you just happen to be there that day that somebody says, hey, I got eight, eight puppies, but.
Yeah, so here's the, the fees. And I mean, I guess the, the reason that the puppies are, are obviously the highest expense. And sort of that is because we want the older dogs are less desirable, so, so. The stuff that's more highly desired, we charge a little bit more for to encourage people to get a six month or an eight month or an older dog. That, that may have a, a harder time getting adopted. So there is kind of a, uh, economics in that a little bit. We incentivize. Oh, yeah, yeah, everything that comes in is spayed.
That made a huge difference in terms of adoption rates and success. Um, it used to be, you, you picked the dog. And we, we wanted proof that you got it spayed or neutered and we cha- chased that after the fact. Then it was, you picked the dog. But you couldn't take it home with you. You, you had to leave it with us to spay and neuter and recover. And now we just proactively spay and neuter them and they're ready for adoption.
So like with a puppy, you, you bring it back for the spay and neuter for that price?
No, we, uh, we have fostered till they're of, of an age.
Oh.
And when they can be spayed and neutered, we take care of the spay and neuter with our contracted veterinarian.
Gets it.
What's that? And then it also includes a vaccine, sorry.
So no, no puppies go, go away till they're.
Yes, correct.
Eligible to be neutered.
Right, and microchipped and they have them all, you know, basic level of vaccines. Uh, yes.
So, and one of the things I think we can do is take a look at a staffing model that. That makes it available, um, you know, at five days a week, six days a week. See what that costs. That then starts to. Um, head down the path of your question, Carl, of can donations help with that additional staffing? Um, the balance might be able to cover for a little while. The question becomes is it inconsistent enough revenue source to do it? On an ongoing basis, but. Um, and then the other thing we've talked about is the need for facility improvements and expansion, which donations could fund that. Anything else parks related? All right. I, I meant to start the day by thanking you for your willingness to. Put aside this much time. I've had other managers marvel at. Uh, they'd be happy to get three hours of strategic planning from their governing body, but. I, I appreciate the opportunity and it, it drives our organizational planning long term, so.
So we'll continue this Monday after the regular. Mission meeting. And then we have our comeback for the second part of this and I don't have my calendar.
Uh, yeah, so after we, we wrap up, staff will put together kind of a survey instrument and um. You know, question number one is, is this a priority for you? Yes, no? And I think I'm going to add a neutral category. So you're not forced to be yes or no, but try to gauge your general uh interest and then have you kind of rank it in a priority basis as well. Tabulate all that up, share that with you in advance and start to have a sense of, of, you know, what the consensus might be amongst you. And then get us back together in the eighteenth of April um for a half day session to. Kind of confirm priorities and, and uh, and if there, if there are overarching, um, you know. This is very much more a mechanical nuts and bolts approach to strategic planning than kind of the organizational. Touchy feely um approach that might otherwise be done, but if there are overarching goals, uh, mission statements. Policy initiatives, um, we want to know that as well.
Just for scheduling, is that going to be, I think that's a Tuesday. Will it be a morning session or an afternoon?
Thinking mid morning to mid afternoon is my recollection.
I can do that. I mean, just as long as you have the rough. I'll just schedule before and after.
We have it from nine to two.
Yeah, put that in. That'll work. Good. What did he say? I mean, I. Nine to two. I have it all day.
Yeah, Paul is emailing the other day, said nine to three.
Oh, I love, she has it on my calendar, nine to two, and but. Oh, I love, she has it on my calendar, nine to two, and, but double check.
She's got open forum at three forty-five and then meeting concludes at three, so.
We'll double check, but it's definitely on the eighteenth and mid-morning to mid-afternoon.
I'll be in a bad mood that day because that's when your taxes are being.
Yeah, we should have planned better. All right. Well, thank you again. Um, if you have feedback, feel free to send it my way and I'll kind of take that into account as well, but.
Thank you to everybody who prepared these presentations.